Education System Oversight Meeting. Today is Thursday, January 6, 2011. My name is Tanze West Barber with the Office of Communications for Prince George's County Public Schools. Today's oversight meeting will include a news break entitled "Turning Schools Around", as well as five items on the legislative agenda. The discussion item for today is on Common Core Standards. Today's budget consent agenda includes approval of expenditure requirements, appropriation reassignments, change orders, contracts, and acquisitions. There are three items on the consent agenda, including consulting services for the E-Rates program, request for charter school renewal for the Imagine Public Charter School, and grants reporting. The new business includes a discussion about the Fairwood Elementary School. Thank you for joining us. Our board meeting is about to begin.
Thank you, Ms. West. Good afternoon and welcome to the January 6, 2011, meeting of the Prince George's County Board of Education. Before I begin, please turn off your wireless communications as they tend to interfere with the taping of the meeting. Board Member Ms. Peggy Higgins will not be in attendance this afternoon. During this board meeting, the topic of discussion will be student achievement. Ms. Eubanks, would you please lead us in the board prayer and pledge of allegiance?
Oh God, we pray to administer that which is just in all educational policies, being ever mindful of your guidance. Stir us to action with love, wisdom, and understanding. Amen. Will you join me in a pledge of allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Eubanks. Ms. Labonne, call the roll, please.
Mr. Armwood?
Present.
Ms. Boston? Mr. Barrows?
Aye.
Ms. Eubanks?
Present.
Ms. Higgins? Ms. Johnson? Ms. Waller?
Present.
Mr. Harris?
Present.
Ms. Hathaway Beck?
Present.
Ms. Jacobs?
Here. Mr. Harris?
Thank you, Board Chair. I would just like to take this opportunity to announce that P.E.G.R.A.S.S., our regional association of student governments, is here, and the ZachBoys is here to represent. Also, we have students from Wise High School here to talk, and students from Duval High School.
Colleagues, may I have a motion to adopt the January 6, 2011, board meeting agenda?
It's been properly moved in second.
Thank you, colleagues, that we adopt the January 6, 2011, board meeting agenda. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? Seeing none, motion passed. Colleagues, may I please have a motion to approve the October 28, 2010, board meeting minutes? Second. It's been properly moved in second to approve the October 28, 2010. Yes, October 28, 2010, board meeting minutes. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, signify your approval by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? Seeing none, the minutes are approved. We will now have a news break called "Turning Schools Around."
This is a Prince George's County Public Schools News Break.
Turning around schools that aren't doing as well as they should is maybe the toughest, maybe the most controversial, and I would argue some of the most important work in our country today. And we had some very encouraging results come out yesterday from the Maryland's Communist Alliance. We talked about these schools that are basically dropout factories. Well, there were 2,000 of those schools, high schools identified in 2002. By 2008, 900 of those schools had come off the list. So unfortunately, some more added on, but there's been a net reduction. And so for folks who say that schools can't improve, or you can't get better, or schools are struggling, or communities' students can't graduate, well, they're wrong.
Education Secretary Arnie Duncan's strong endorsement of the need to turn around struggling schools, and the rewards of making that effort, was made recently at a roundtable discussion at the G. James Golson Middle School in Landover. Joined by school superintendent William Height, the NEA secretary, and other local officials, parents, and educators, Mr. Duncan listened to what was working at one of Prince George's four turnaround schools, failing schools in the lowest 5% of Maryland schools that are radically changing their staffing, their curricula, and the way they do business.
The co-principalship is a model that's used nationwide. Ms. Robinson and I also had the opportunity all year to plan and prepare for Golson. The co-principalship model allows you the opportunity to have two people work at a higher capacity to get your results.
Ms. Cross and I started as New Leaders for New Schools resident principals last year, and from the moment that we met through the program, we had been talking about this dream of having a co-principalship. Our vision and our missions, and as well as our work ethic matched really well.
I've had plenty of students come up to me and say, "Ms. Dawkins, did you notice that my picture was in the booth for Scholar of the Month? Did you see me hit that home run? Did you see me score that basketball? I mean, make that shot?" So just getting the kids and the staff to realize that we can celebrate all types of victories, not just the A. that you got on the test, but I can celebrate the fact that you went from a C. to a B. I can celebrate the fact that you didn't have to have any negative phone calls home. So that's what the process of change looks like.
And while the whole enterprise of turning around low-performing schools requires lots of money, and the federal government has committed over $4 billion to such imperiled schools, perhaps the greater challenge is an emotional one.
Secondly, what's been missing, resources are now on the table. What's also been missing is courage. As a country, we haven't taken this on to the courage that we need. And you cannot buy courage. That comes from Dennis, that comes from Lewis, that comes from Dr. Height, having great principals step up and do their work. I want to hear from the parents. Change is hard. There's often a resistance to it first. I'm sure in this community, again, I want to have a really candid conversation. I'm sure a lot of parents maybe didn't want change at this school, that people were sort of comfortable with what was going on. But when it's not working for children, and children can't succeed long-term academically, you have to challenge that. What I've found is often the parents who are the most upset at first are often the most pleased once they see the progress and transformation, that you have to sort of work through that difficult time with them, because parents have been lied to so many times. This whole notion of turnaround is not about doing what's popular. It is about doing what matters to increase performance for young people. And as we went through throughout the communities to talk about this whole notion of turnaround, individuals were suspicious of why we were making some of these decisions. And at the end of the day, it's because it's not okay that 15% of the population at a school is reading on grade level. It's not okay that 17% or 23% of the students are proficient in math. So this is about doing what will improve the conditions for the young people throughout our schools here in Prince George's County, not just at these four turnarounds.
One of the reasons Prince George's Schools was chosen for the Summit on Turnarounds was its history of educational leadership and its reputation of successful collaboration among unions and professional staff.
We were given the assurances that, hey, look, as we move through this process, if we need to make change and adjustments, you'll be at the table to help us with that. And of course, that made that process, I think, workable for us as an organization.
And one of the reasons I wanted to come to you is because I believe that everything I've read and heard demonstrates what we believe is an absolute necessity, and that is collaboration. We send out our executive committee members all across this country to visit our priority schools. And the thing that comes back, the greatest success, is when people sit down together. The adults sit down together and decide what is it that we want to do together to change what's happening to the students in our schools.
What's important is it's a work in progress, and the fact that it started with four schools. And we're going to look at how this process is going. But these four schools required us, through the regulations, to really have new staff members, have new leadership. And so it was a whole learning change, culture change for how we do work. But what was important is that we're providing now opportunities for young people, opportunities to be exposed to more rigorous coursework, to language, to extended learning, and have the staff be a collaborative member of the decision-making process inside of these turnaround schools.
Secretary Duncan, who has often visited Prince George's Schools, offered some final praise for the county's embrace of reform, its spirit of innovation, and its courage.
We're going to follow Prince George's County's progress very closely. We want to be a good partner, and we want to make sure that the children here get a dramatically better education than what they're receiving previously. And visiting some classrooms today, seeing the teachers, seeing the co-principals here who are absolutely dynamic, I'm, again, couldn't be more encouraged about the possibilities for children here.
For Channels 96 and 38, this is Dave Zerrin reporting.
Thank you. Good afternoon again, and Happy New Year to everyone. I want to welcome you to the first meeting with our newly-elected board members. We have many challenges ahead, as many of you know, but we will be putting that before you consistently as we go through this very tough budget season. We have several upcoming budget meetings which are on the website and that we would like for you to follow so that you can participate in that process. Want to congratulate Oxon Hill High School's Advanced Ensemble, who have been invited to perform at the Ebony Scholarship Society's 17th Annual Martin Luther King Jr. Memorial Breakfast. On November 5, 2010, I had an opportunity to visit Mr. Stephen Price's classroom, Social Studies, at Buck Lodge Middle School, to share with the class some of my duties as a board member, but also to hear from them with regard to their student achievement goals. It was a delight to see the great work that our teachers and staff are doing to ensure that students are getting the best education that we can provide them. Also, want to thank Principal Richardson and Mr. Price for their hospitality. Later that day, the students were able to participate in a basketball game where their teachers played, the District III police officers, and the staff at Buck Lodge. A moment of silence for the following, please. Eleanor Brooks, mother of Vera Brooks, Secretary, Student Services. Alfreda Holick, mother-in-law of Patty Holick, Administrative Secretary to the Deputy Superintendent. Charles B. Young, husband of Valerie Young, data support technician in the Title I office. Again, during this time, thank you very much for that moment of silence, and remember those families in your prayers. This Wednesday, January 12, 2011, at 6:30 p.m., the board will host a community meeting at the Bowie High School Cafeteria, which is located at 15200 Annapolis Road in Bowie, Maryland. The focus of the meeting will be to inform the community and receive feedback regarding the superintendent's recommendations for maintaining funding within the Capital Improvement Plan budget for the construction of the Fairwood Elementary School. The two areas potentially impacted would be the Tulip Grove Community and Glendale Elementary Schools. The purpose of this item on today's agenda is to inform the public that there is an issue that may come back before the board for a full vote. There is no vote on that issue today. We also have several budget hearings that are scheduled. On January 11, operating budget public hearing, that would be the superintendent's. What the board is presently doing, at the recommendation of Dr. Height, and we support, is that we don't anticipate that the governor's budget will be submitted until the week of January 26. So we are restructuring our schedule to make sure that when we present to the public that we have the governor's budget in hand, and that staff can make whatever adjustments they need to to the budget in light of the governor's budget. If you are interested in speaking and registering to speak at these public hearings, please feel free to do so, and we encourage you to do so. Please call two and a half hours prior to that meeting daytime at 952-301-9526115. Dr. Height, I yield the floor to you for the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good afternoon, everyone, and Happy New Year. I would like to welcome back our students and staff from winter break, and thank our many partners in education who helped to make the holidays brighter for students in our school system. The Washington Redskins donated toys to students in seven of our schools through their annual Skins Santa Shop at FedEx Field. All-Pro running back Brian Westbrook provided warm outdoor winter wear to nearly 450 students at William Peca Elementary. And many individual community partners supported schools in their neighborhoods this holiday season. Congratulations to the more than 200 students and staff from our schools that were honored before the holiday break at the first board awards program for the 2010-2011 school year. In addition to their academic achievements, a host of our students were honored for their creative talents in the Maintenance Department's Annual Snowplow Murals Competition, where students decorate school system snowplows with murals designed and painted by secondary student artists. Congratulations to this year's first-place winning team from Northwestern High School. I also want to recognize and congratulate a number of our students, who will be joining an elite group of talented musicians from across the state in 2011. Students from schools across our system have been selected to join several bands and orchestras through a highly competitive and rigorous audition process. Vicente Contoma from Dr. Henry A. Wise High School, and three students from Eleanor Roosevelt High School, Nick Ober, Katie Skinner, and Adnan Chithari, were recently accepted into the Senior All-State Band. Sutland High School students Erica Coschow and Amelia Calo joined Eleanor Roosevelt students Matthew Halada and Anarag Sharma in being accepted into the Senior All-State Orchestra. And Jessica Walker from Bowie High School is now a member of the Junior All-State Orchestra. The groups will begin practices this month and perform in concert on February 27 and March 13. On the athletic front, congratulations are also extended to our outstanding athletes who made it to the final playoff games in their divisions in the Maryland Public Secondary School Athletic Association statewide championships. In November, the Bowie High School Bulldogs' girls soccer team were regional champions and went on to compete against Bethesda Chevy Chase High School in the final playoff game of the Class 4A Division. In December, the Dr. Henry A. Wise High School Pumas won the Class A football semifinal game and went on to compete in the final playoff game against the Urbana High School Hawks on December 3. Congratulations again to all of our students for their academic, creative, and athletic achievements. And finally, as you know, we are facing yet another challenging year for educational funding. As we celebrate the achievements of our students, we're also working diligently to ensure that they have the resources and opportunities they need to continue their success in the classroom. This year, it is more critical than ever to stand united in support of education funding. As the board chair indicated earlier, we will be sending out a revised list of dates for a public hearing around our budget process, because we wanted those public hearings to be after the governor released his budget. So more information will be coming forward based on those dates. Madam Chair, that concludes my remarks.
Thank you, Dr. Height. Colleagues, we are at the point of public comment on items for which the board will take action, or items that are listed on the agenda in the order. The next item on the agenda is a legislative agenda, and we do not have anyone signed up for that agenda item. So I'm going to ask Mr. Lucci if he would come forward and provide the board an update on the legislative agenda.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, members of the Board of Education. Happy New Year to all of you. It's only January, it seems, and it's not, six months away from the Fourth of July, and already there are fireworks coming from Annapolis. As you have heard, the state has to close a $1.4 billion budget gap, a very significant one. And as you probably know, among the 50 states in this nation, Maryland has the strongest budgetary powers of the governor and the weakest budgetary powers of the legislature. And what that means is that the governor puts some money in the budget, and the legislature's only power is to take money out. It can't increase it, it can't shift money around, it can only make cuts. And so pretty much the whole funding power really falls to the governor. And tonight, he's going to give an address to the Maryland Association of Counties, generally outlining his plans for the budget, which will be released on January 26. But just from what we've heard from the state budget secretary, we know it's going to be a very, very difficult year. You have before you five items to make decisions on today. And the first one is a legislative agenda, and this is a draft for your consideration that attempts to lay out all the various positions that the board may be asked to take during the session, and lay them out in advance so that our partners in elected office, your partners in elected office in Annapolis and Upper Marlboro, know very clearly and upfront what your positions are. And so I'll generally walk you through the document, and then before your consideration of it. And the first one is to have adequate and fair funding of public education. And it notes that of all the different functions of government under the state constitution, only one has a constitutional mandate for funding, and that is public education. And so the idea of a budget is, as you know, a statement of your values. It doesn't mean you have to cut things across the board, it means you make priorities. And in Maryland, according to the Constitution, public education is the highest priority. And so we're asking for full funding of what was funded in the past, with the Thornton Formula and the Geographic Cost of Education Index, and to fix the, as we now call it, the net taxable income problem, so Prince George's gets the full amount of funds that it should receive. Secondly, the second plan is to strongly oppose the proposal to shift state pension obligations to the counties. Last year, the legislature set up a commission, which reported on December 21 to the legislature recommending that local boards of education pay half of the consolidated pension and retirement costs, including social security and the pension payments. But that'd be indexed by the wealth factor of each of the county's jurisdictions. That would still be a huge burden upon Prince George's County when it's right now having to deal with shortfalls with the education system. And so number two is to strongly oppose that proposal. Number three is to support logical maintenance of effort requirements and to oppose illogical ones. Last year, there were a lot of proposals on maintenance of effort. All of them failed in the House of Delegates on the last night of the session. What doesn't make sense in the current law is if a county fails to make maintenance of effort, the penalty goes on the local board of education and not on the county, which would be the one that's failing to make the burden. And so that's an illogical one that we're proposing not to support. And what we are supporting is the present system, where there's an appeal mechanism to the state superintendent, who gets to make the decision in terms of whether or not there'll be a waiver or not. Number four has to do with continuing the strong funding of school construction in the state, this governor, the past four years. And the legislature's made a very strong commitment to funding public school construction, and we want that to continue. Number five is to protect public education from unfunded mandates and local authority intrusions. There are often very many well-meaning pieces of legislation in Annapolis that attempt to micromanage this board's statutory functions and/or to impose new mandates without the funding attached to the mandates on the local board. And certainly, this is not a time to oppose new unfunded mandates upon the public school system in Prince George's County. Number six is regarding proposals in the past to take public resources and give them to private education systems. And one of those involving tax credits passed the Senate last year and failed in the House. And this makes the point of when there are scarce resources, you have to go with priority one, which is public education. And finally, there's a commitment to support comprehensive school safety policies. Last year, the Speaker of the House had a very good proposal, which passed, called the Safe Schools Act, which looks at school safety and security in a comprehensive way and not a piecemeal way. And this just urges continuation of that type of approach, a comprehensive one, not a bandaid approach. And so this proposed agenda is now before you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Lucci. Colleagues, we'll take them individually. Are there any specific questions, comments related to the legislative update today? Move to accept. Thank you, Ms. Beck. Is there a second? It's been properly moved in second that the board accepts and adopts the legislative agenda as proposed and has been presented for discussion. Any discussion? Seeing none. Ms. Rodine Cogburn, please.
On the motion, Mr. Armwood?
Aye.
Ms. Boston?
Aye.
Mr. Barrows?
Aye.
Ms. Eubanks?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Waller?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Ms. Beck?
Aye.
Ms. Jacobs?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Chair, you also have before you three pieces of local legislation and one prefiled statewide bill I bring before you today. The three pieces of local legislation had hearings before the Prince George's House delegation last month. And the first one is PG 404-111, which would prohibit the location of telecommunications towers on a public school property, but grandfather in any contracts for such that are already in place. There is a similar piece of legislation introduced with regard to Montgomery County in the past, and that did not receive a favorable consideration because of questions about it being preempted by the Federal Communications Act of 1996. And that one is very similar to this piece of legislation.
Thank you, Mr. Lucci. Mr. Barrows?
How are you, Mr. Lucci? I actually talked to the author of this piece of legislation, and her concern and the concern of several members of the community is that these cell phone towers could possibly have an adverse effect on our students and our employees' health. I know that we've talked personally, but can you please address that?
I might talk to her as well on this, and then she says there are really studies that go both ways, but she was concerned about the risk. Although there are towers by schools and churches and public places all over, there's one right across the parking lot here. So I mean, there are, I mean, she acknowledged there are studies that go both ways on that.
Thank you, Mr. Barrows. Ms. Johnson?
Mr. Lucci, you remember last year when this came up. I asked that you provide to the Board of Education any CDC findings with regard to static electricity that might be generated. And you brought information to us, and of course, I had a similar desire to have this explored. What do you believe is the probability of this moving through the legislature and perhaps being passed? As I look at surrounding jurisdictions and how much the school systems are receiving from the placement of these towers in these economic times, and clearly, children are never, ever going to be expendable to dollars. But if there is no evidence that we can document, and we are living around these towers every single day, and apparently, it isn't creating an issue, then I would like to know, how is Montgomery County? Would they, in fact, be affected by this, or is this strictly a Prince George's bill?
This is strictly a Prince George's bill, Ms. Johnson, but there is going to be a statewide one. And I believe if any bill is going to move, it's going to be on a statewide basis, because it really is a state policy in terms of these towers.
And the probability?
Well, I mean, given the federal preemption problem, I think that's a real hurdle to get over, and that was proved to be fatal to the Montgomery County legislation in the past. The telecommunications companies are very aggressive in pointing out the federal law and how it preempts local regulation of this nature.
And so if we move in that direction, the implantation of these and the construction and the concreting to get them, you know, to get them planted, may very well be very costly to us, or time in terms of what impact it would have. I don't know yet what we should do. I think my colleagues and I will be looking at this again, because if the state is going to be taking care of this, and then you've got the federal piece to look at. I am very concerned about us moving down this road with this level of uncertainty. Not sure. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Mr. Armwood?
Am I correct in understanding that there have been no studies done by the federal government or any other agency that's accepted, that has found negative effects? government or any other agency that's accepted, that has found negative effects of the electromagnetic magnetic radiation?
My understanding is there is no CDC study. There are plenty of academic studies that go both ways, but no final conclusive decision by a federal agency.
But the FCC and CDC have looked at it and found no results officially, correct?
Correct.
What would be the potential loss of revenue to the school systems if this bill did pass?
I'll punt that to my... Mr. Armwood, it's essentially, it's generally at a minimum 5,000 per tower, per provider. And up to four or five providers can be on a tower. So it's 20 to 25,000 per tower, per year.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Armwood. Mr. Harris?
And how many towers do we have on our properties so far?
We don't have any, Mr. Harris, but we were looking at a proposal that would place over a period of years, a number of potential towers, 60 potential towers, and it would generate revenue around 1.2 to 2.2 million a year.
Ms. Beck?
I move to oppose the legislation.
Thank you, Ms. Beck. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Armwood. It's been properly moved and second that we oppose the legislation which would prohibit the telecommunications towers for Prince George's County public schools. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none. Ms. Levon, call the roll, please.
On the motion, Mr. Armwood. Ms. Boston.
Aye.
Mr. Barrows.
No.
Ms. Eubanks.
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Pass.
Ms. Waller?
No.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Beck?
Aye.
Ms. Jacobs?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
No.
Motion carried. Six ayes, three noes.
Thank you, Ms. Levon. Mr. Lucci?
PG 408-11 entitled School Facility Surcharge for Replacement of Existing Single Family Dwelling Units. The school facility surcharge is a law that was passed some 15 years ago, and Ms. Beck was involved in that as a citizen activist, and I was involved with it as well, which has a fee on building permits to go towards school construction so that the Prince George's County government can, and school system can match state dollars going for school construction. It's been a very successful program. Over the years, there have been some limited exceptions to that law that have been implemented. One of them was if you lost your house due to a storm and you rebuilt it, you would not be subject to the surcharge. It happens occasionally, not frequently. This bill would take that one step further and says if you decide you want to demolish your house and rebuild it, you don't have to pay the school facility surcharge. It appears that the fiscal impact on the school facilities fund would be very minimal, but there may still be a potential impact. It's not known how many of these gutting and rebuildings happen in the county every year, but they were told are very, very, very few. So that's the matter before you. There was a person who appeared before the House delegation hearing who is in this situation and was asking for the bill to pass so that she would not have to pay the fee in order to have her house gutted and rebuilt.
Mr. Lucci, is this specific to individual homeowners?
Yes, it only implies the single-family homes and not a whole development.
So how much would an individual homeowner have to pay without this bill if they actually demolished their home and rebuilt it?
Depends where you live in the county. I think it's 12, 5.
So it would be the same, the same fee that the builders would pay per unit?
Right, because you still have to get a building permit to build the house.
Okay. Ms. Beck?
My concern with opening up the surcharge bill is that once you have a bill floating through Annapolis like this, that who knows what else can be added to it at the very last minute. And we made $17 million off of surcharge last year. I realize the dilemma that the individual who was testifying gave, who wanted to enlarge her house on the same property and felt that she didn't have to pay, she wasn't required to pay the surcharge because her children were already in school. That is a dilemma, but I think it's a bigger dilemma or a bigger risk for us that if we allow the bill to go without commentary through Annapolis, that at the very last minute, it could open up to who knows what, which was what we were dealing with in the early 2000s, managing that bill daily because of the add-on sent amendments. So I will not be supporting this.
Thank you, Ms. Beck. Before I go to further colleague comments, Dr. Height, can you, do you have a view on this at all?
Yeah, we were talking about this earlier today, and because we don't know the number of residents that would be affected by this, it's no way of knowing if it will be a substantial or very minimal impact to us. Most, the 17 million that Ms. Beck was referencing, most of that, quite obviously, is from new construction. So I just don't have enough information to take one position or another on this.
Thank you, Dr. Height. Mr. Barrows? Ms. Johnson?
Mr. Lucci, even though you're referencing a single piece of testimony, my concern pretty much is, as my colleague Ms. Beck, this legislation I find very specious in that it draws on a single example.
Correct.
That concerns me, that legislation would be drafted on a single example. It tells me that particularly in our aging-in-place communities that are near where planning is for with regard to metro, mass transit, and the ICC corridor, I suspect there is potential here for years that we can't see but are already being drawn. I will not be supporting this.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. And one other question, Mr. Lucci. Did I hear you say at the beginning that the exception already exists for, I guess...
Natural disasters and fires and things like that.
It does exist. So if your house burns down and you have to rebuild, that's different?
Right.
Okay. Mr. Barrows?
Madam Chair, I'd like to move to oppose.
Thank you, Mr. Barrows. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been properly moved and second that we oppose PG 408-11. Any further discussions? Seeing none. Ms. Levon, call the roll, please.
On the motion, Mr. Armwood.
Aye.
Ms. Boston.
Aye.
Mr. Barrows.
Aye.
Ms. Eubanks.
Aye.
Ms. Johnson.
Aye.
Ms. Waller.
Aye.
Mr. Harris.
Aye.
Ms. Beck.
Aye.
Ms. Jacobs.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. And the final bill, it's easier to ascertain the fiscal impact from that. PG 409-11, transportation of public school, students' school buses. Similar piece of legislation was introduced last session and was rejected by the Prince George's House delegation. This would set up a uniform one-mile limit after which, for walking distance, after which the school system would be required to provide school transportation. And I think this has been measured in the millions of dollars in terms of the impact on the school budget for having to provide the extra transportation for that.
Mr. Lucci, what was the bill number?
The bill number?
Yes.
PG 409-11.
Thank you. Mr. Barrows?
Mr. Lucci, unlike the previous bills like this that we've seen in the past, this actually has a one-mile limit on not only just elementary schools, but middle schools and high schools.
Correct.
What was the rationale behind that? Do you know?
I think the sponsor was concerned that all students need to not be, walk excessively or near hazards or near places of danger, is my understanding.
Okay, so normally, in the past, I've supported bills like this because I know at least in communities throughout the county and from community members that I've talked to, we actually have elementary school students who have to walk when it's dark in some of our, some of our most challenging neighborhoods. And so I normally support this when it comes to elementary schools, but I think it's a little bit unrealistic. High schoolers can walk more than a mile, so can middle school students. So I actually will be voting no on this today, and maybe we can communicate with the sponsor that if it's amended to only have elementary school students, then I would be in favor of it.
Although, I mean, setting those limits is really presently the board's and superintendent's purview right now, and I mean, you could do that on your own without being told by Annapolis.
Definitely. And I saw that this was a House bill from the delegation?
Well, the sponsor is Senator Muse, but delegation, all local bills originate in the House, and that's why it's started in the House.
You know, the Senator has had his concern for many, many years, many, many sessions, and his concern is the safety of our students, and that's, you know, our number one concern. And so I believe we can meet with the Senator to work out a compromise. I do know that financially, we wouldn't be able to afford doing high school and middle school, but I know that the safety, at least for elementary school students, is a little different. And so hopefully, we can communicate that with the sponsor.
Thank you, Mr. Barrows. Mr. Armwood and Ms. Johnson?
Yes, sir, we have. And in fact, we've communicated that even in the event where it's, the route is longer than the prescribed route inside of the policy or procedure, we will send our safety officer out to walk with students and their parents, and in the event that it is deemed unsafe, we would supply a bus in those situations. And we have communicated that to, not only to Senator, but to both delegations.
Do we have any information as to how many times we've actually done that?
Oh, yes, we do. I don't have that information with me, but we've had quite a few instances where we've added buses because there were safety concerns of the students who were previously walking.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Armwood. Ms. Johnson?
Mr. Stansky, if you could articulate the proposed or projected cost that this would have to us immediately?
Pulling it up. Give me one second. Yeah, probably in the neighborhood of $3 to $5 million additional. So it's essentially additional buses, additional drivers, additional attendance.
$3 to $5 million. And the fact that we already make accommodations for adding buses, adding routes where there is definitely an identified danger, I think about several schools since we have been, I've been on this board where parents have brought the issue before, and we have actually sent out our Safety and Transportation Division, and they have remapped it, and there are buses that are running to transport. So it is not that we're turning a deaf ear. We are doing that. But again, we are providing transportation where it must be provided, and we are not sacrificing our children on the basis of money. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Ms. Beck? Move to oppose PG 409.
Second.
It's been properly moved and second that the Board of Education opposes Prince George's County Bill 409-11. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Ms. Levon, call the roll, please.
On the motion, Mr. Armwood.
Aye.
Ms. Boston.
Aye.
Mr. Barrows.
Aye.
Ms. Eubanks.
Aye.
Ms. Johnson.
Aye.
Ms. Waller.
Aye.
Mr. Harris.
Aye.
Ms. Beck.
Aye.
Ms. Jacobs.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
And finally, before you, you have House Bill Number 1 for 2011 regarding education youth athletes' concussions. There are only 26 House bills and seven Senate bills prefiled this year because of the election, and this is one of them. Last year, the board supported a stronger bill by Delegate Walker regarding concussions. During the interim, Delegate Davis got involved and discussed this matter with a lot of the coaching staff in the different schools and the school community, and came up with this bill, which instead of requiring the state to issue mandates for the localities, it asked the local boards to come up with their own guidelines and working with the coaches on, it's purely nationally, is a very serious problem with concussions in high school and collegiate sports. And so this bill is before you. Again, it is, it is not as strict as the bill that you supported last year.
Thank you, Mr. Lucci. Dr. Height, I want to yield to you first. Can you give us some feedback?
Yes, Madam Chair. The staff support this bill, supports this bill because it is, it is a modified version from the previous year where it would have been a fiscal impact to the system. This does allow for the procedures to be developed locally, and based on that, it's to ensure the safety of all of our students who are participating in interelastic sports. So this is something that we support.
Thank you, Dr. Height. Mr. Barrows? Okay. All right. Move to support. Thank you, Ms. Beck.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. It's been properly moved and second that we support House Bill 1-11. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Ms. Levon, call the roll, please.
Mr. Armwood.
Aye.
Ms. Boston.
Aye.
Mr. Barrows.
Aye.
Ms. Eubanks.
Aye.
Ms. Higgins? I'm sorry. Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Waller?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Ms. Beck?
Aye.
Ms. Jacobs?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. See you in two weeks.
Thank you, Mr. Lucci, for that update, and we look forward to the meetings that we will have with both delegations around our legislative agenda. Thank you for representing us.
Thank you.
Okay, colleagues, that brings us to public comment on items for which we have in our discussion for the board meeting today. We have nine registered speakers to speak on the topic of student achievement. The rules are as follows: You must speak on the topic for which you have been registered. At the sound of the buzzer, you may complete the sentence that you're on. You may not relinquish any part of your speaking time to another registered or unregistered individual. You are encouraged to use titles rather than names, for example, board member, superintendent, executive director, et cetera. If you have brought copies of your comments, please leave them with Mr. Pressley. He will raise his hand so that the board can also get copies of those. Your adherence to these guidelines will enable public comment to, the process to move smoothly. First on our list is Jerius Baker, 10th grade student, president SGA, Crossland High School. Please come forward.
Hello, everyone, members of the board, Superintendent Height, students, representatives, audience members. My name is Jerius Baker. Again, I'm Student Government Association President at Crossland High School and a high school advocate for Peaggrass, and I'm here to talk about student achievement. In 1993, the Anarundel County Board of Education adopted a policy to place weight on advanced placement and honors courses. The same practice has been adopted by various boards, such as the Charles County Board of Education and the Montgomery County Board of Education, who has placed equal weight on APN honors courses. I bring this up because this is one of the small, however significant flaws in our current grading procedure. There's a significant, there's a significant difference in the amount of work and the time that is allotted to complete assignments in honors courses versus regular classes. This board should be awarding our students who spend extra time, who put in extra effort, and go the extra mile to ensure their success in APN honors classes. and go the extra mile to ensure their success in AP and honors classes. While AP courses are recognized, honors are not at all. Exactly what's the point of having class that calls for extra work and there is no extra to the grade? For many students, especially freshmen, sophomores, and juniors, school is our job. And when people do overtime on their job, they get paid for their overtime. Our students want to get paid for the overtime that they put in in their honors courses. If the students feel as though they're not being awarded for the extra work that they are putting in, I know for a fact that they will get discouraged and upset and eventually begin simply not to care. I've spoken to someone in academics, and they say that one of the reasons we don't weigh our honors courses is because we cannot we can't tell a difference between honors courses and regular courses in our curriculum. And I want to ask this board today, why is that? Why is it that our curriculum, we can't tell a distinct difference between a course that we consider honors and regular? My point being that it's time that we have a curriculum and a procedure that does what's best for our students, especially those who do the best that they can. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Christian Hosam? Not here. Richard Lucas III?
Good afternoon. Imagine this, coming to school every day and being bullied. Indulge me and walk down those hallways fearful and afraid. Imagine being teased, picked on, and laughed at because you're a little too tall or maybe a little bit too short. Maybe you're from a different country and you have an accent. Maybe you're heavier than many or skinnier than all. Maybe you wear glasses, or maybe you're just different. Whatever the reason, imagine being set apart for ridicule and mockery by your peers, not because something you have said or done, but because of who you are. This may sound like a nightmare for some, it may sound like a flashback or a scene out of a film, but it is precisely what thirty-five percent of our students struggle through every day. An important factor in the achievement, progress, and success for our students that is often overlooked is a sense of community and safety inside our schools. Without this, no matter the rigor of the curriculum, the credentials of the teacher, or the technology of the classroom, the student will not perform to their maximum capability. Studies show that a student who is constantly a victim of bullying not only suffers emotionally, sometimes physically, but also academically. The student does not view the school as the key to their success or a catapult to their future, rather the harbor of their demise. And prior to popular belief, bullying does not stop in elementary school. It is a learned habit that continues to middle and high school. It's just words, and it happens to everybody, are not excuses. This should be our focus, improving the sense of community and safety inside our schools. With more peer mediation, more conflict resolution, harsher penalties for repeat offenders, and guidance counselors that do more than create schedules and write recommendation letters, but counsel those students who need to be guided back to the road of self-esteem and emotional potency. Furthermore, we are here before this prestigious board discussing an obviously flawed and defective grading system that clearly disadvantages students that fall behind and handcuffs our teachers. We are here having meaningless and futile squabbles over rudimentary legislation like a cellphone policy that has done nothing but spark rebellion, frustration, and confusion from students and administration alike. We are here in this room while someone's child is being teased. We are here while someone's grandson is crying in the playground, not from a fall from a jungle gym, but from someone's cutting words. We are here while someone's daughter is being scorned and scoffed at. And it is here that we must make the pledge to protect our students and ensure their achievement. That is why we're here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lucas. Philip O'Haka?
Hey, how you doing? Good afternoon, and a happy new year to both the chair and the audience. Today, I will be touching base on illiteracy amongst the students and what possible causes are. All students are asking, what purpose does the HSA serve? To me, I feel as though it is a comparison amongst students within different states. Education-wise, it tests students on how ready they are prior to graduating from high school and inserting themselves into the real world. Why is English such an important language to master? English is a universal language. Therefore, it is important because without the knowledge of it, one cannot communicate their thoughts or ideas amongst each other. Without prior knowledge of English, one would be shut off from education and other people in the country. Why is the writing, why is the writing section an important skill, why is writing an important skill to obtain? Writing is an important skill to have because it is the medium of communication. Writing skills are essential for achieving careers, businesses, and/or any ordinary day-to-day activities. Unfortunately, today, these skills are being neglected. If one wants to achieve their goals, superior writing skills are imperative. Why is the writing assessment omitted from the HSA tester? Having known how important being able to read and write is, why would one not challenge us to familiarize ourselves with a task that we will need and use later in life? Why take out writing but yet leave reading, knowing how they both cooperate hand in hand? The question that students have is why. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Haka. Christian Thornton?
Good afternoon. I believe, and many other students have voiced many problems and concerns with our new grading policy. This policy is inefficient and handicaps a student's ability to succeed. While the policy does display accurate percentages, it has many disadvantages. One of the major disadvantages is that it hinders improvement and academic progress. For instance, if a student falls behind or does or does not perform to their ability first quarter, it will be very difficult for a student to obtain a respectable final grade. Instead of adjusting the grading system to make it seem as though our curriculum is rigorous, the curriculum needs to be changed. Improving our curriculum will guarantee higher SAT scores, higher HSA scores, higher AP scores, and most of all, college and career-ready students. Students have spoken, and I believe that this policy needs to be reviewed and analyzed with P-grass's input. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thornton. Malcolm Memberra?
Good afternoon to the board and audience. I'm here to speak on the allowance of passing students without them having the required credentials to go to the next grade. According to the grading policy, students are being allowed to pass a class even though they don't have the required credentials that allow them to pass. As a result of this, more and more students tend to just go along high school and get by the education period without actually learning anything. And although it may be their fault to a certain degree, you can't ignore the fact that the education system is simply standing by and letting them further advance to the next grade level. The students that are being allowed this golden chance are more often found to be incompetent and unable to get through their next grade level with ease due to the lack of academic training they received in their previous grade. The foundation that was needed wasn't set. Now, these students may go all through high school, not gaining their necessary academic skills, and they graduate being mentally crippled with illiteracy. So they're sent out to the world with a deficiency in academics because the education system and those that control and run it didn't take immediate action and try to prevent this catastrophe. And the outcome of this is, most of those students that didn't measure up and were simply passed along different grade levels, not actually considering that grades in those classes tend to not make it past their high school diploma. And then the Prince George's education system is now facing a problem where they're not sending out the full potential of students toward the college route. That is all.
Thank you. Jacob Cogman?
Good afternoon and happy new year, ladies and gentlemen of the board. My name is Jacob Cogman, and I currently am a junior at Oxon Hill High School. This year, I have the privilege of serving the students of Prince George's County as the regional P-grass's first vice president. I am here today to speak to you about the grading policy. This current grading policy serves as a disadvantage to students. How? Visualize this. Little Jimmy walks into school the first day. Throughout his academic career for that year, he makes an eighty percent the first quarter, a ninety percent the second quarter, a ninety-two percent the third quarter, and ends out with a ninety-five percent the fourth quarter. What's his final grade? Well, eighty plus ninety plus ninety-two plus ninety-five equates out to a three fifty-seven. Divide that by four, and you get an eighty-nine point two five. So even after all of his hard work and his significant gradual improvement, little Jimmy is left with a B as his final grade. You may be asking, what does this have to do with anything? Well, he is a model for one of the disadvantages that this policy serves to students. By having the final grades being based off of the four marking periods, we are indirectly discouraging student improvement because in the end, there wasn't significant impact, even though he made a significant change. However, this isn't the only problem with our current grading procedure. I've done research for surrounding counties regarding their grading policies. For example, Anarundel and Charles County both weigh their honors and advanced placement courses. So my friend and I from Charles County can go to school for the same amount of time, take the same honors classes, learn and complete the same material, and both get the same grades for the end of the marking period. But I'll end up with just a four point oh, while they can walk around bragging that they have a four point five. This is yet another disadvantage that this policy serves to students. When I saw reasoning why Prince George's County has not done this in addition, I was told it was because we can't distinguish between a comprehensive and an honors class. So my question to them was, why is it we can't discern the two? This leads me to the real issue, a prevalent issue which for some reason we aren't tackling as we should. Even though the grading policy is a problem, the real issue isn't the grading policy, it's the curriculum. You, the Board of Education, have an obligation to do what is right on behalf of the students, especially those that put forth an effort. By having this current curriculum in place, it serves as nothing but a major disadvantage to students and hinders their achievement, especially for those that plan to pursue higher education. Fixing the curriculum is the solution that I see best to deal with the problems at hand. Though little Jimmy is fictitious, he is a realistic example. I beseech you, our elected school board representatives, to consider my claim and act on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cogman. Jamie Miles?
Good afternoon. I am here today to present comments and concerns about the grading policy. The grading policy has enough potential to work in full effect if and only if the policy followed for a long period of time. By switching from the old policy to the new one, we failed to attain the full capability that the previous alpha grading system had. Its effect wasn't presented, so on the new policy, we have to preserve and grow from grow from it in a long period of time. The Prince George's County educational system needs to hold on to one grading system in order to compare and contrast the full student value. This process makes it easier to assess the skills and academic capabilities of students. Otherwise, the students are thrown off guard and forced to adapt to a new system which can change the grading system and your effects, the student's strategy and education plan. In conclusion, I would like to urge the board to stick to one grading policy. By doing this, you allow the students to work at their full potential. Also, you see the overall process of the students' academic achievements through high school under one grading policy. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miles. Brian Wadike?
Good afternoon, everyone. I am here to speak on obstacles that hinder students. Our grading policy is unfair. The whole education system is handicapping current middle school and high school students. The vital subjects in school include math, English, and science. Therefore, teachers in these subjects should be held accountable for their integrity on passing students. I can conclude that the jobs of teachers are stressful and demanding due to the fact that they are liable for the student's education and test scores. For example, Mr. Doe has failed almost half of his algebra class. Mr. Doe is correct that the student's performances are not up to par with the requirements, but changes the grades due to implicit pressure from an authoritative figure or group. With fear of losing his job and finding other means for his financial stability, Mr. Doe is forced to comply. This scenario takes place in most classrooms throughout the Prince George's County. I really question the way our lives are being altered by teachers accepting laziness and lack of care from students. Students are being promoted into the next level without acquiring the skills needed to master for the next one. Parents are not properly informed about their child's status until it's too late. To conclude all of my accusations, the educational system is structured around the finance the government is willing to provide. Is it our location, race, ethnicity, students, teachers, or the Board of Education itself? Education starts from the household. The statistics in my in my high school indicates that seventy percent of the students come from single-family homes. These children are already at a disadvantage not having a father figure to guide them. Mom is at work most of the day and comes home tired and stressed out. The child has no other adult figure to assist them with their homework assignment. This situation takes place frequently and is hurting our children in today's society. These children lose interest in academics and turn to drugs or the street life because they are lost. All of the, all of the pressure that the child is encountering is now on the concerned teacher. This teacher is forced to become a babysitter and an educator, two jobs in one. These children that lack home training due to adult supervision crave attention at school. The student is unaware that school is a place to educate yourself with uncertainties and to be friends. How can this be solved? Thank you.
Thank you. That round of applause was a bit premature. We have another student who has to speak, so we're going to have to do it again. Christian Hosam is here.
Good afternoon. My name is Christian Hosam, and I am a student at Charles Herbert Flowers High School. I am the president of the class of two thousand and eleven and an executive lobbyist with P-grass. Let me preface this statement by saying that I am sure that it is the desire and purpose of this legislative body to foster a competitive, goal-oriented student body for Prince George's County. However, the current policy of grading based on a numeric system using a zero to one hundred percentage scale does precisely the opposite. While there has been quite a bit of controversy pertaining to its impact on graduation retention rates, I am here to discuss the merits of this policy from a different, more personal perspective. A part of the new policy makes it so that the grade received in the first quarter carries through the rest of the allotted time in the class. What that basically means is that achieving a grade that you have set for yourself is much more difficult than it ever has been. For example, if I receive a grade of seventy-nine in a class, I have to achieve a higher grade in the next quarter than if I had to receive the grade of eighty-four. Under the previous policy, the average grade in the class was calculated at the end of the year, giving each student four separate opportunities to do their best. Under this policy, if a student does poorly in the first Under this policy, if a student does poorly in the first quarter, it is harder to achieve a grade that their study habits make sure they actually deserve. Instead of encouraging students and making their improvement seem worthwhile, I can think of nothing more demoralizing than realizing the low C that you got in the first quarter because of a poor first quarter final grade or test grade keeps you from reaping the benefits of the three-quarters of hard work and fighting to make sure that the poor grades that you received don't hinder you in the rest of the year. Imagine students in the eighth grade who don't always hit their stride in the first part of the year, but have outstanding success in the kinds of improvements that they make. This policy effectively hurts their chances of success when they arrive in high school and discourages them before they even begin. The fact of the matter is that the policy ignores a larger issue with the academic landscape of the county. The curriculum of the county poses much more difficulties than the policy of giving grades to students. We have a county in which AP courses seem to be too hard for many students. There are teachers who are not always accessible to their students or giving them enough instruction. And there are classes in which the large amount of subject matter is expected for the students to teach themselves. While this may be the exception instead of the rule, I believe that these issues are much more pressing and immediate than determining how we give grades, and it should be the focus of this body. Ignoring these issues in lieu of continuing a policy that lowers student achievement only serves to exacerbate them. I understand this policy was created to make a more challenging and intensive academic environment. Quoting from the rationale in its administrative procedure, the policy is to be based upon the degree of success an individual student has achieved in completing the educational program designed to meet his or her unique needs. Sadly, the implementation of this policy hurts the county and hurts students, lowering the morale and the determination that is so prevalent in this county. Isn't that worth a change? Thank you.
Thank you. James Cogman? I'm fine. I got notice from staff that I missed someone. Okay. Okay, suspending the rules. One minute. I have comments from Mr. Harris, Mr. Burrows, Miss, everybody. Why don't we start with Mr. Harris?
Well, first, this is the exact thing I was talking about when we first, when the old Board first discussed the grading policy. These students contacted me about this grading policy. To be honest, I didn't know it changed. Half the school didn't know it changed. I heard from a couple of teachers that it changed. But the thing about this grading policy is, the first thing is, it's not only is it confusing, it was, students weren't involved in it. Only, to my knowledge, only the teachers' union was involved in it. And on top of that, it's the fact that it disadvantages students. It provides, these students came up here and they said, if I get an eighty the first quarter, but three As, I still receive a B. And the fact is, yes, grades, yes, it is more accurate, but the real issue, and these students said it, the real issue is not our grading policy. There will be nothing wrong with our grading policy if we had a real curriculum. Let's fix the curriculum, let's go back to the old system, it'll bring up our AP grades, it'll bring up our HSA scores, and it will achieve what we want, and I think it's in our Common Core standards, college and career-ready students.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Mr. Burrows?
I just want to say, I am so, so proud of you guys. I've known most of you for many, many years, and you've all been absolutely phenomenal in what you did here today was so impressive. It is without doubt that some of you will be up here one day, and it could be one day soon. When I was the student member, we actually redid the grading policy, and the several arguments that you all made, the same arguments that I made, and I think the most important argument is, is that when you go up for a scholarship, making the same grades as someone from another county, their GPA is higher than yours. So who's gonna get the scholarship? It is pretty clear that this grading policy is not student-friendly, and it's not just the weighting of the honors classes, colleagues, it's, in some counties, lowest you can get on that assignment is fifty percent. And so there are several things that are in place in other counties to benefit their students. And we're, and in our county, the grading policy is actually extremely detrimental. And one thing that I want to point out to the students is actually not a policy. The change was not done by the Board, it was done by the superintendent, superintendent staff. I will actually support a policy change that gave the grading policy back to the school board so that we had the, so that we have the ability to change the policy. Because members of the Board didn't know there was a change, teachers didn't know that there was a change, students didn't know that there was a change, and when all of us don't know there is a change, there's a problem. So I'm actually going to support and measure that would give that authority to the school board.
Ms. Waller?
Thank you, Madam Chair. To these wonderful young persons that have addressed this august body this afternoon, I want to say thank you. You have represented your teachers, your administrators, and your families in a most admirable manner. As I sit here and I listen to your statements, I see scientists, doctors, lawyers, clergy, teachers, and yes, I see world leaders. It is because of the rigor that we want to instill, not at the high school level, but from the time our students, our children are born, they go to kindergarten, daycare, first grade, sixth grade, middle school, high school, whatever. We want the best for them. We want them to achieve academic success. And certainly, to the fine young men and the young lady that represented today, keep on keeping on, and congratulations.
Thank you, Ms. Waller. Ms. Boston?
I'm too really proud and very impressed with what I've heard here today, but I want to address the part of the student who talked about the bullying. That is definitely a real problem in the schools. And having been in a school where a child was actually, was accused of dying because of bullying, I understand the impact that that can have on a child. I do believe that we need to address this issue, find some ways to address this issue so this bullying, we can, you know, attack this bullying issue so it doesn't continue.
Thank you, Ms. Boston. Mr. Armwood?
I think, I think all of you did an excellent job in representing your views, in representing your schools and families. We will look at the grading policy, and I'm wondering if weighting the grades and looking at the curriculum is the cure for that. Thank you for bringing it to my attention.
Thank you, Mr. Armwood. Ms. Johnson?
First of all, please note, I have made written statements that each of you, with regard to what you had to say. You are truly extraordinary. I am so proud of, of the fact that our students have come and they have addressed the Board of Education. What impressed me the most was about your demand for rigor, about writing, how important writing is, to be able to express oneself as a retired teacher of languages. What you have done today says that we are clearly on the right track, and I wish to, at the end of these proceedings, if you're still here, I want to shake each of your hands. I am just over the moon about young people who are living large, and it is great. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Ms. Sheebanks?
I just had to chime in with everyone else. I had been listening and totally happily pleased with what I see. I've worked with youth since I was almost your age. When I was your age, I worked with smaller kids. And I love to see it when youth are not afraid to fight for what they want, and I say that with all honesty, that we as adults can learn from you, to learn to stop being quiet and to stand up for what we believe in. And in reference to the bullying, that needs to be taken under consideration as well. There's so much stuff going on in the school that we don't hear about. There are a lot of good things, but there are other things that need to be dealt with, and we need to just stand up and be counted. Thank you for being here today.
Thank you, Ms. Sheebanks. Dr. Height, sheba's in?
I did, Madam Chair, thank you. And I too want to thank the students, and this represents the type of students that we have throughout our county. And I do want to acknowledge all of them, I know most of them personally, we've met before when I see them out at schools or at the Peagrass meetings. And I also want to acknowledge the tremendous work of Mr. Burrows, both as a student board member who's now in college. And this is also a good time to announce that Mr. Harris, our other student member of the Board, was just awarded last night, as a matter of fact, Posse Scholarship to the University of Wisconsin at Madison. I want to congratulate him. And the reason I make those two points, because I think it's important, and I think it's important for everyone to understand that when all of you, the students who spoke, when Mr. Burrows, who is now a student in college, and when Mr. Harris goes off to college, they're not gonna get to define their grading policy. The policies that are in place are the policies that they're gonna have to adhere to, and those policies don't allow them to receive grades that are less than proficient, and at the end of the semester, receive a grade that then allows them to pass. That doesn't happen. And that cannot happen if we're preparing our students in the county to go off to be competitive at those colleges and universities, or even in the world of work. So while, Mr. Burrows, you're right, it is a policy, and it's a grading policy, but that policy emphasizes that the superintendent and administration propose procedures with respect to grades to ensure that students are prepared to move to that next level. And we are always in a posture of listening to the students, and we, and I do appreciate all of the students who spoke today. We're always in that posture of listening, listening to students and improving upon the procedures and, and policies that are in place. But make no mistake about it, it's our goal to ensure that you have the best opportunity to be successful once you leave schools in Prince George's County and represent Prince George's County across the nation, across the state, and in other areas. So once again, thank you for your advocacy today. We'll continue to talk about this issue. We will also talk about bullying, particularly as it relates to the high school. And we will have a meeting where grading policy will be an agenda item, Madam Chair. We'll propose that so we can actually talk about the rationale behind why we have the policies that we have in place. One last point, the weighting of honors courses. We are looking at that right now as to how we do that. First, we have to standardize honors courses and the assessments that are associated with that, so the representation of those grades mean the same across all of our schools. So we are looking at that, we're gonna be, I'm gonna be encouraged to talk with Peagrass about how we do that, how we go about doing that. So once again, thank you so much for your advocacy, and ladies and gentlemen, you saw representation today of the tremendous students we have in Prince George's County.
Thank you, Dr. Height. Ms. Armwood?
I just want to make one comment. Something that stood out was the position or comment that you're not being rewarded for the extra work you put in and for the success you show. One of the things that makes a leader, and one of the things that makes you successful in life, is the willingness to go the extra mile, even if you're not going to be recognized for it. When you put in that extra work, you recognize and you know what you did. Those who are with you know the extra work and success you've shown. And very often, that is enough. That is what you should strive for, that joy of learning and joy that you have done the best you can show. No grading system will ever show the full effort you put into succeeding. So please remember that as you go forward in your careers, because I know you're gonna be successful.
Thank you. Colleagues, that leads us to the first agenda item, which I am very much hopeful that if our students can stay, that they will actually stay to hear this discussion around Common Core standards. I'm very much interested in, as the presentation goes forth, as to how the evolution, if you will, of Common Core standards would affect a lot of our work around curriculum and the ability for students to have rigorous coursework that can be properly compared across the state and other areas. Having said that, also, congratulations to students who spoke today, and Dr. Height, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And inasmuch as this is a student achievement meeting, this academic update provides us the chance to share with you some of the analysis that we've done with respect to achievement on our first-quarter benchmarks. We're gonna share some of that information, and then we're gonna move into this, the new Common Core standards. And many people have heard this term, Common Core standards, which have become a part of the Obama's administration's efforts to really standardize a more rigorous curriculum across this nation. And many states have signed on to what's called the Common Core standards. So Dr. Abregaz will give us some highlights on that after he walks through a presentation just talking about where we are with respect to first-quarter benchmarks. So at this, at this point, I will yield the floor to Dr. Abregaz, who will walk us through this presentation.
Good afternoon. I wait for the presentation to come up. Today, we're gonna look at where we are and where we're going. And the very first part that we're gonna share with you are our benchmark assessments. Our benchmark assessments are aligned to our curriculum, and it gives us a good measure. Now, something you need to know about our first quarter and second quarter benchmarks, we've actually did correlation studies on Benchmark One and Benchmark Two. Benchmark Two, which begin this week and run over the next couple of weeks, are more closely correlated to performance on MSA and HSA than first quarter. And that's actually a good thing, that's exactly what you want. You want to be able to see where performance is in October and see, and have the opportunity to grow. The second benchmark being closer to the assessment is actually more predictive than the first, but the first does give us a clue about where we need to be. This first chart is mathematics by grade, and what I want you to do is, I want you to look at the total column for 2009 and the total column for 2010. And the conclusion is, there's not a significant difference in mathematics from first benchmark to second benchmark, with the exception of grade seven. Now, I want, I also want you to recall, last time we did academic update, the area that we had the largest growth in mathematics was actually grade six. Do you recall that? Notice, this is the same cohort of students who've moved from grade six to grade seven, and we're seeing, I'm seeing a pretty significant bump. So my, what I think's gonna happen is, I think we're gonna see a corresponding bump in seventh-grade MSA scores this year. I'm particularly pleased with this slide. In this slide, instead of looking left or right, look down, and I want you to look at mathematics performance for special education students and students with limited English proficiency. When we had our last academic updates, special education was a student group that kept standing out, and I want you to look at those numbers. Speculation as to why we're seeing this increase, you know, we have this co-teaching model, but we've made a significant effort to involve the special educators in the standards-based conversations and collaborative planning, and we think it's making a payoff. By the way, MOD are those students who are working significantly below grade level, and their disability requires modifications in the assessments. MSA has a MOD assessment, and those students will take a MOD benchmark assessment. This next one is basically a reading readiness, and I want you to look at, I want you to draw your attention to kindergarten. Now, remember, this was given in October. Scores, we see a little bit of an increase in scores, but I want to be very careful in our interpretation of the kindergarten scores. This is the number of kids who are scoring at Level One in October. That means they have book sense. They know that text moves left to right, they know that pictures convey meanings. I do not want you to think that this necessarily implies that students are reading independently. However, when you go down to first grade, I think that's a much more accurate picture of where the kids were in October. But something that you need to know- that you need to know, the expectation, again, in October, 1st grade, is that kids know print concepts. They know letters, but they don't, they know letters, but they don't have every sound in command. They know that text conveys meaning. They know it moves left to right. They know sight words. I submit that it's the end of January, February, where 1st grade students really have to put it together for reading. So we take this data with a, with a little bit of a caution, and don't read too much into this. I think the data that you see in the spring is actually a much better representation of where students are performing. This is the SRI data. Again, pre-test, post-test. And I'm not seeing significant difference in Grades 2, 3, and 4, and 5 between last year and this year. And we'll talk a little bit more about that later. However, reading language arts, again, look, okay, 2009 is on the left, 2010 is on the right. I'm seeing some pretty nice gains, again, with special education students. We have three different reading programs that we use, America's Choice, our comprehensive program and toolkit. So each group takes a different assessment. So you have to compare America's Choice to America's Choice, Comprehensive to Comprehensive. This next slide, Brief Constructive Responses. I'm deeply concerned about this slide. And I'm concerned about the num, the large numbers of zeros. In order to get a zero in a brief constructive response, you either have to refuse to answer it or be totally off-topic. I'm actually appalled at the numbers on this, these brief constructive responses for that number of zeros. To get a 3 on a brief constructive response, not only do you have to understand the text, you have to make a connection beyond the text in order, in order to receive a 3. So this one bothers me. Special education, 2009, 2010, we're seeing growth in special education, in grades, small growth in 6, a little bit better growth in 7, and a pretty good bump in Grade 8. However, ESOL students, I'm not seeing that bump. This is Brief Constructive Responses for Grade, this is Grade 6, 7, and 8. I'm much happier with the distribution of scores here than I was in elementary school. However, you're seeing many of the students at hovering at 1 and 2, and we definitely have to move those to 3. This is high school data for English. We've, and I, the point that I want to make here is you've heard a lot about AVP projects and kids passing the projects in order to graduate. We've made a concerted effort to get the kids to pass HSA the first time through. It's actually the instruction and the core content. And we've put curriculum instruction, and the high school consortium has put a tremendous amount of effort in this. And, and for this first marking period, we saw a bump. Science, Grades 5 and 8. This is Biology. Huge jump in Biology, although there was a slight change in the test. There were a couple of items in, in the 2009 benchmark that had not yet been covered in the curriculum, and many of the students missed it. That has been realigned. So that could explain the large increase from one to the other. However, when I look across the four content areas, we actually saw a bump in all four content areas. So I don't think it was just the change in the test. See the bump in Social Studies? No change in the test. We thought you might be interested in seeing how the immersion classes go. This is, I mean, the immersion schools. These are their performance on the math and the reading FAS test. But that last column is the language proficiency of the students, obviously 5 being the highest. These are our Tag Center performance on FAS and MSA. MSA is not particularly discriminatory at the top end of the scale for Advanced, and you can see the students in our Tag classes do very, very well. MSA is not the best metric, I think, to really evaluate our Tag Centers. It's, the test is not, does not distinguish high-end as well as it should. Okay, this, this one requires a little bit of explanation. The first two lines are the number of course registrations, the first two rows, and the bottom row are unique students. And what I mean by that is a student can be enrolled in more than one AP class at a time. So I wanted to show you what our AP enrollment looks like. And we're real pleased with that more and more students are taking AP, and this is something that we talked about in our last academic update. And also, more and more of our students are actually getting 3 or higher in AP. Pretty pleased with those 9th graders. Okay, so where are we going? Want to talk about these topics, and I'll talk about them with a little bit more focus. Early reading. You know the budget is a challenge. You know that we're losing era funding and era funding positions. So that means we have to figure out other ways to support early reading. We remain committed to guided and leveled reading. What do I mean by that? School districts can take two different approaches into the instruction of reading. One is to purchase a scripted program, where basically the teacher holds the manual and reads directly from the manual. As a matter of fact, teachers are actually assessed on the fidelity of how closely they stick to the manual. There are many school districts in the country that have gone in this approach, and they generally do see an initial increase in scores. However, I question the development of teacher capacity and the, the ability for teachers to make decisions. Guided reading is very teacher-capacity driven. It requires a diagnostic, prescriptive approach, where the teacher is assessing virtually everything the student says and responding by an appropriate question. It requires high capacity, but is much more tailored to individual students, both in to develop a phonetic ability, structural ability, and comprehension. Prince George's County has committed for quite some time to a guided reading approach, and we have no plans to abandon that. However, we recognize that developing teacher capacity is absolutely essential. So how do we do that? Teacher-university are professional development opportunities for teachers outside of school to earn in-house credit for reading competency. The third point, the school leader network, we're very excited about. You've heard about professional learning communities within schools. We're talking about developing professional learning communities across schools around specific issues like math in 6th grade, algebra, but in early reading. We think that by getting the people who know reading the best around principals and key leaders in schools, and actually having that conversation around how do students really learn to read, and what kind of text they need to be engaged in, we'll think will make a difference. And because it's supported by Race to the Top, this will not have a budget implication. The MSD Breakthrough Center is supporting us in reading. That, their Breakthrough Center is also supported through Race to the Top funding. Reading will be a focus in the 11, 12 principal meetings district-wide. Several areas have chosen reading this year to be a focus for their principals. We will be working directly with reading specialists. The DRA, I'm pretty excited about, the developmental reading assessment. This is an assessment that looks at fluency and word correct, word correction, and students' abilities to react to words and self-correct. And we actually piloted this last year, and we're expanding it for this year, and will continue to expand it for next year. It is a combination of running records, where you're looking at error miscues as students read, and fluency checks, which are the number of words kids read per minute. We are rewriting the 6th grade math curriculum to add the advanced component. We are, you know, we've been doing work with the Institute for Learning at University of Pittsburgh. The work that the University of Pittsburgh, the core work, is they believe in content expertise. They believe that there's a way of thinking in each content, and students need to learn that. That is absolutely aligned with Common Core. So our work with IFL has actually put us in a much better position than many of the other districts in the state of Maryland. Now, Common, IFL has had a spotty implementation, mainly due to the presentations coming from external people. When the IFL disciplinary literacy has been controlled by Dr. Whitehead's group, the principals have been much more receptive, the teaching coordinators have been much more receptive, and we feel like we're getting much more bang for the buck. The IFL allows us to develop, as the young people who spoke today, much more rigorous assessments, much more rigorous activities than are what's suggested by the Maryland State Curriculum. There will be a new writing curriculum, and I know you're glad to hear that, and I'm glad to hear it too. The state is working on it now. It will be introduced to schools this summer and be implemented next year. We have not waited for the state to write the curriculum. We've, our English Language Arts team has actually been putting writing prompts, not BCRs, but real writing prompts and essays, embedding them into instruction. But there will actually be a formal curriculum rolling out this summer. In addition to that, there will also, the state is coming out with a STEM curriculum. And STEM, what I really want you to think about that is the application of science and technology and mathematics skills within the classroom. So, Common Core. So what's the big deal? Common Core, you must be able to read complex text. And the word "complex" is the most important word in that statement. And yes, competence and confidence are important, but it must be complex. It's William Faulkner. It is astrophysics. It is rezing, it is reading Newton and Darwin. It is reading text that has not been watered down, and, and reading it with competence and confidence. And, and to our young folk in the audience today, I can tell you that does not come easy. I have to reread things, and I'll have to slow my pace of reading, and I have to really bring a lot of understanding to, when I'm engaged with complex texts. Next point. When you think of reading, you think of stories. You think of narrative literature. Common Core says, that's only a small part of the game. Most of the reading must come in the content area. And we're not talking about Wikipedia. We're talking about sophisticated text. Now, we have a challenge here, because you know with technology, we've moved more to shorter Wikipedia, Google-type text. But Common Core demands us to engage in, in the content-specific text. And frankly, I think we need to look at original authors like Newton and Darwin. And we actually have to start reading at that level, which I don't believe you guys have done, but that's exactly where we need to be. And that's where you will be in two years or three years when you're freshmen, juniors, sophomores and juniors at the university.
Dr. Abregaz?
Yes?
If I could just add a point here. So as we talk about this notion and emphasizing complex, I think one thing that is important, as we, as we think about this work and how it applies to us, this is really looking at a college standard for literacy. And there've been recent studies that have determined that the text complexity that students were exposed to over the, over the years has really become more basic, more simplified, whereas colleges have continued to emphasize more complex text. And this is really looking at ensuring that that level of complexity is also available inside of high schools as well. So this is a very important point and a very key distinction to the Common Core literacy requirements versus the literacy requirements that are in place today.
Thank you, Dr. Height. And I also want you to know, and I know many of you check email during presentations, but if you look at the New York Times Bestseller List, and you look at light reading versus the heavier reading, you will see, as Dr. Height said, our culture is consumed with light reading. It's consumed with it. It has absolutely taken us over. So we actually are swimming somewhat against a tide here, because now we're suggesting much more complex text than what you're, what we're seeing culturally. So this will be a challenge for the grown-ups in Prince George's County, the community in Prince George's County, as well as the students in Prince George's County. The last two points, you know what? Reading it is not enough. If you can't write about it, if you can't develop your argument based on evidence, it will not stand up. So the young folks who spoke today were spot-on. It is the ability to communicate complex ideas through writing. And this is what, this is how Common Core will be assessed. This is a standard in 5th grade. It is not "What Did the Horse Do?" Common Core Math. One of the criticisms about mathematics in the United States, and you know there's been a lot of justified criticism in mathematics, that most industrial countries outperform us in mathematics. And one of the criticisms, criticisms is that the curriculum in the United States is a mile wide and an inch deep. You guys experience that. You have a new topic every day. Every day, it's a new topic. And it's, it's constantly spinning. And what's the next thing? And teachers are racing through the curriculum because we're trying to cover so much. That's not the way it is in many of our other countries, in the industrialized countries. They are an inch wide and a mile deep. So I want you to use that metaphor as we go through this. That first point, focus on the word persevere. Students are not expected to get the answer right the first time. You are expected to work hard on a single problem through the evening. That's very different. We are in an immediate culture. This requires that you work through a problem and spend a significant amount of time on a single problem. Reason abstractly, make, we don't have to discuss that. Again, do you see where viable arguments become part of the criteria? Using models, structures, using, and I apologize, tool, it should be tools, tools strategically, using techno, technology strategically. I love this next one. Precision. You have to be right. If you're building radar for the United States Government, Department of Defense, you must be precise. And I know you all play Call of Duty Black Ops. So you know how precise, that's how precise you have to be. So, using structures and looking for patterns in reasoning. Here's an easy 5th grade problem I want you to solve. Ms. Beck, would you like to? Now, but think about it. This, this question is really not that hard if you unpack it. A pattern of 3s and a pattern of 6s. Actually, our 2nd graders can do that. But to establish those relationships and to be able to describe those relationships takes our instruction to a very different level. Behaviors. You've heard about the profile of the graduate. What do we want students who are successful in Common Core? And what do we want for the young folk in our audience today, who will be university students in the next year or two? Strong content knowledge and independence. Being able to respond to various audiences and task. And to discipline. Do you know an attorney thinks differently than a surgeon? They're trained differently. It's a different discipline. They must be able to not only comprehend, but critique. And I'm seeing the word critique and evaluate in almost every one of the standards. You have to value evidence and use technology, and you must understand multiple perspectives. And that's part of our global awareness. So, what's happening? What's, what are the, let's get down in the weeds with Common Core. Park, there are two large consortiums building assessments. One is called Park, which is the state of Maryland, is a governing board for Park. And the other one is called, interestingly, Smarter. So, and I'm going to talk a little bit about Park's work in just a moment. The writing and STEM curriculums are being, curriculum are The writing and STEM curriculums are being written now and will be rolled out in principal academies this summer. Every school in the state of Maryland must send a principal and four staff members to the academies for the initial introduction to Common Core. This last point worries me. The curricular crosswalk. And let me tell you why this worries me. In the voluntary state curriculum, we talk about assessment limits. And every teacher in Prince George's County knows what the assessment limit is and teaches to the assessment limit. That is, they're thinking in incremental ways. Common Core requires a more holistic strategy. So the State of Maryland has contracted with a company called Achieve. And Achieve is doing a curricular crosswalk where they're saying, "Where does our current curriculum match Common Core?" I'm worried that that might be the wrong approach. I'm not sure we want to send the message, "Oh, look how similar they are." I think we want to send the exact opposite message. I think we want to say, "Look how different they are." I think we need a new thinking, a holistic thinking about what teaching and learning look like. So I'm very cautious about this curricular crosswalk. This is what PARC is proposing. There will be what they call "through courses," through-course assessments. And they will assess, do you see where it says "start of the school year" and "through course"? That first assessment will only measure what the kids have learned in that first part. And then there's through course 2, 3, and then 4. But then there's end of year that pulls it all together. They also want to bring in a speaking and listening assessment as part of the total assessment package. There will be constructed response, performance task, computer-enhanced, and computer-scored items. Performance task, I want you to think the AVP projects, project-based learning, is much more around performance tasks. We're very excited about this. And we actually think this is probably an excellent way for students to learn, because that's exactly what they do when they go into college in the world of work. There will be a heavy demand for the use of computers. Almost all the assessments will have a significant computer component. So that's something that we have to think about in advance. However, today's testing technology does not match our technology. For example, MSA and HSA are not compatible with mobile devices. That's got to change. So there will be a resource center available to students and teachers across the participating states where we can look at released items, model curricular frameworks, practice tests. There'll be a lot of stuff online for states to tap. The text complexity diagnostic tool. Dr. Height talked a little bit about text complexity. There'll actually be a tool to measure that. And I'm real excited about that last one, the K-2 assessments in early literacy and mathematics. This is the timeline. There'll be field testing, not next year, but actually the year after. And we don't look for full administration until September 2014. So this is going to take some time. Prince George's County cannot wait for 2014 and 2015. That's why we're real happy that we're connected with the IFL Institute for Learning, because that's allowing us to build some of our own, that cognitive demand and task that we think are going to be very closely aligned. As we work with IFL, as we work with Aspen Institute, we realize that our vision and Common Core's vision are closely aligned. We've actually communicated that to MSD. And the last piece that I wanted to go over is a little bit about Race to the Top. You know, Race to the Top, Prince George's County received money, but Maryland received the bulk of the money, the state. There are the assurances, world-class schools and the competitive, and then the innovative and charter. And I just wanted to point out to you that the State of Maryland is actually using their money for the adoption of Common Core while we're linking Common Core to IFL until the state can roll out their piece. They're looking at longitudinal data systems where you can track students pre-K to college. And that's going to be very helpful. Meanwhile, we're looking at data warehouse and data quality. Both of our plans are looking at how to attract, develop, retain, and compensate excellent teachers and leaders. They've developed the Breakthrough Center. We're working with Hillside Work Study. The STEM is the initiative for them. We have a couple of things going on with STEM. The NASA NCTAF is a relationship where NASA-Goddard scientists are working with teachers at three of our high schools, developing project-based modules around earth science, Goddard. And we're very excited about a new program we have with University of Maryland, that the conclusion of the course, students will receive three credits of engineering at the Clark School of Engineering at the University of Maryland. Very excited about that work. It's episodic, it's a little bit here, a little bit there, but we feel like we're moving in that right direction. So that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to entertain questions or comments.
Thank you, Mr. Arbogast. I'm sure my colleagues might have some more detailed questions, but I have sort of a broad question around or request for explanation. So the implementation of Common Core, is it necessarily, is it per se, more rigorous just in and of itself?
Absolutely.
Okay. And so how do we take the STRIVE to 5, those two main categories around high student achievement and effective teaching, and sort of relate that in a way that we can communicate that to the public? And let me give you an example. So I was talking to a constituent a few weeks ago, and I expressed this to Dr. Height, who, you know, talked about the STRIVE for 5, but talked about it in the sense that it was too broad, they didn't understand it. In their mind, they just saw it as, "Our 8th grade students don't take algebra." Which I corrected. But having said that, how do we make this tangible, if you will, for people to understand it and know that it directly relates to our high student achievement goal and the highly effective teaching goals?
Personally, I think the best tool that we have is the profile of a graduate. And I think the profile of a graduate does an excellent job of articulating what we want for our students. And if you'll recall, the profile of a graduate talks more about learning behaviors, than it talks about actual content expertise.
Exactly.
But in our KPIs and our key performance indicators, we're actually looking at proving courses that have correlation to college success. And they are advanced placement, international baccalaureate, and dual enrollment. Like the example I just gave you about the engineering. So what we have to do is, in part of our Race to the Top, we're working with College Board. And we're actually doing a district diagnostic. And the interviews actually start two weeks. And in the district diagnostic, they'll be looking at the efficacy and fidelity of our advanced courses, the pipeline courses. But more importantly, I think, they're going to go all the way down in elementary school to look at the college-going culture. Are we creating a culture at the earliest grades to show that kids can do and value rigorous work? So that's step one. Step two is, we have to mimic the assessments, because you know that teachers are most concerned about the assessment. When we pass out a FAST test, a benchmark assessment, they pore over the assessment saying, "Is this what's going to be on MSA?" And we say, "Well, no, we don't know what's on MSA." But assessment drives the education culture in the year 2010 and 2011. You know that. So we have to build those assessments in-house and then incorporate the PARC assessments as they roll out. We cannot wait for the PARC assessments. So we've asked our English Language Arts team to develop writing prompt assessments, essays, that are not on HSA, but are still in the coursework, because we feel that that's the type of rigor that we're looking for. In this budget climate, it's very tough for us to convene folk to build new assessments, build new curriculum. That's going to be a challenge for us. We're going to have to think of creative ways that are best and brightest can get their heads around driving this conversation. But earlier, we talked about these networks, these professional learning communities across schools and across content areas. We think that that's really an excellent way for our staff to learn.
And I think it was a really good example when you demonstrate to us that these same 6th graders that are now in the 7th grade, you can see that it's the same group of students. And I think if we're able to track that kindergarten student to, from grade level to grade level, it gives us a better sense of how the school district is doing in preparing the students. Because if one, if a student from this point goes, you know, the other way, something happened. And so that's another way I think IFL is very helpful. Thank you. Let's see. I have Ms. Boston and then Ms. Johnson.
I have one question. I noticed that on all of your FAST slides, there were no mention of grade 9. Why is that? They do not take the FAST assessment?
We do MSA in grades 3 through 8. So the FAST assessments are correlated to the MSA voluntary state curriculum. When students enter high school, instead of going grade by grade, it actually goes by subject. So the critical assessed areas are 10th grade English, algebra, biology, and government. So we have FAST tests in the assessed areas, because our purpose, remember, is to get kids to do well on the state assessments. We are developing FAST tests in non-assessed areas, if that makes sense. Developing FAST tests in, like chemistry, where chemistry does not have a state assessment. But that's the switch from 8th grade to 9th grade.
Thank you, Ms. Boston. Ms. Johnson?
Dr. Arbogast, I mean, clearly, there are so many questions to be asked. Let me begin by saying that what I'm looking at here is something we've talked about. We're talking about a complete paradigm shift here, where we are being asked and we are demanding, what do students need to know? When do they need to know it? And how can we measure if they have acquired that knowledge base? Yes?
I actually would take it a little bit further, because it's more than just learning things. It's actually being able to make connections across things. But I agree, it is a paradigm shift.
And so to that end, let me ask you. At what point are we going to develop new report cards that go home that will have graphs, narration, so that parents can see the tracking of their children, even to the point of them becoming digital, as it were? Because A, B, C, D, F, E, whichever, yeah, they tell you something. But parents really want to know, in this scheme of this amount to be learned, where does my child fall within that? So that they can understand whether the child is achieving well, achieving and tracking on time, or if the child is latent. Let me get the others' ask of you. What do you believe will be the percent of students who will enter kindergarten in 212, for the 212-213 year, who will need support to be proficient/advanced by 3rd grade? So we're not continuing to build this basic group of students who are going to need even more work to get them out of the blue box in the information of data we've collected thus far? Next item, I've asked about the report card. And building the proficiency in areas of reading/vocabulary, math problem-solving, and writing, which one student talked about. These Common Core standards are international or world-type of standardization. And my concern is that, as I look at the data that came in the first series of slides, we're looking at incremental increases, which clearly, it is a good thing. But 2014 is looming large. It is around the corner. What do the systems do when they don't make 100% by 214? Okay?
Four questions. Report cards. The report card that most school systems use in the country has been around for a century. It has not, it does not match not only today's thinking, but it actually doesn't even match the thinking of eight years ago. If you're interested in learning more, Rick Wormley has a book, and I think it's called "Failure's Not an Option." Excellent description of standards-based recording. Now, he doesn't really talk about technology, he's not a technology person. But if you, guys, if you want to read Rick Wormley, if you want to have a real conversation about how people should be assessed, I suggest that you read that book. The technology piece is there, but our background thinking as a nation hasn't quite caught to that. So that would be my response to the report card question. The school readiness. I was looking at some interesting data prior to this meeting. We disaggregated our school readiness in these areas. Head start experience, pre-K experience, childcare, nursery school, and in-home. Of those groups, the group, I'll let you think first about which group you think was the least prepared for kindergarten, in-home. And our pre-K, which you have to be income-eligible, did not do as well as private nursery school, but it was close. That tells you something. We have to figure out a way to reach every child before they enter kindergarten. And Ms. Johnson, I don't know how, you know, with the current budget, it's hard just to maintain what we have now. How do we dig deep into the homes of 2-year-olds and 3-year-olds and 4-year-olds so that they're ready? There was a 14-point difference, no, 17-point difference in readiness between kids who entered our pre-K and kids who came out of home care, I mean, came out of personal homes. So proficiency is reading math, which goes right to my last question. If we can't expose children to language and vocabulary and experience, have them label it, then we're already behind the eight ball. So those early years are absolutely essential. And your last question was really about AYP. The state and the federal government have to come to some conclusion, because no school in the country will make AYP in 2014. So something has to change. And Race to the Top, Common Core, new assessments, new differentiated tracking, value-added growth models will all be in place before that happens.
UDL is added to that, yes? We're looking at UDL?
UDL is a strategy, but I see UDL as a very small part of the bigger paradigm that you're talking about.
Thank you, Mr. Arbogast. And I guess just to add to that, Dr. Height, you know, Dr. Grasnick has been very vocal about the state's position on this 2014 piece and wanting to address it long before 2014, whether it's waiver or some other way to look at it, which will be difficult in light of the new configuration of, if you will, of Congress. Mr. Harris?
Dr. Arbogast, under early reading, you talked about the DRA. Can you just briefly explain that a little bit more? And also, where are you piloting, what schools or what grades are you looking at right now to use that?
The DRA is developmental reading assessment. And it is a, it's an opportunity for students to read, and then they're assessed on how they read it. So it's given much more individualized. And our pilot actually is a way for us to collect data. Off the top of my head, I don't know which schools are piloting it, and Dr. Whitehead's here, and she might be able to rattle them off much better than me. But it was something that we talked about last year. Our reading office was very excited about this. I think we're completely in sync with moving in this direction. Using the SRI at the end of 2nd grade is way, way too late. Running records are a common assessment in schools, particularly schools that use reading recovery. But I'm going to argue that running records are only one piece of the total assessment for early reading. So what you have to be looking at is, not only do you look at your error analysis and a running record, but you have to delve into the comprehension piece, and you have to look at fluency, which is words per minute. I know words per minute sounds hokey, but the research is very strong that as words per minute increase, comprehension increases. And if you think about it, what happens is, the decoding becomes automatic and does not interfere with the interaction with text. But words per minute in and of itself is not enough for Common Core. Because if you can't link what you're reading to personal experience or to other text, that's the level that you need to do for comprehension. So you have to continue to build those personal metaphors in reading.
But when you say early reading, are we talking about pre-K, elementary school?
When I'm talking about early reading, I really need kids reading by spring of 1st grade. And what I need at the beginning of kindergarten is concepts of print. So every kid who... So every kid who enters kindergarten should know that sounds and letters are associated, left-to-right progression, some, a handful of sight words. If you give me a kindergarten kid on the first day who can do that, we can run with it. But if they're not getting their sound letter association or left-right until mid-kindergarten, we have a serious problem. So yes, early reading would be part of that.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Mr. Burrows?
Dr. Arregas, how are we ensuring that our Common Core standards is actually, you know, going on in our day-to-day classrooms? I mean, what are we putting in place to ensure that that's happening?
That's a challenge for us, because we put so much on our schools and so much on our teachers. I want to highlight the work that our reading and language arts, our English team, has done. They are working specifically with team, teacher coordinators, which department chairs, in the English content area, looking at the writing and the kinds of assessments that we're doing. As a matter of fact, at the last principal's meeting, we actually showed videotape of a team, a school team in collaborative planning, deconstructing assessments that kids had done in reading. We also showed a videotape, this was kind of fascinating, this was at Central High School. And at Central, we showed a series of video clips of a master teacher at Central High School, and who went far and above the assessment limit for HSA. So the assessment limit was analyzed tone of a passage. But this teacher actually had the kids acting out tone and writing poetry conveying tone, which is the kind of rigor and standard that we're looking for. But, Mr. Burrows, that's teacher by teacher, school by school, group by group. That's the limitations that we're working with right now. But with the limited staff that we have, we are diligent in attacking the principal perception and the teacher coordinator perception as the keys to changing things at the school level.
Thank you, Mr. Burrows. Ms. Waller?
Excuse me, thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Arregas, you and your staff are certainly to be commended, and I am thrilled and delighted to hear. It sounds like you're going back to the basics when us old-schoolers came along like Ms. Johnson. We have to give credit where credit is due. And I'm delighted to hear this. A question, I have several questions. The first one, and you just hit on a few moments ago, what happens when our kindergarteners are not ready for school? How are we addressing this challenge?
And that's the rub, that I think you find in Prince George's County, very, very committed teachers who bleed for their children and try to provide the experiences. But is the school day long enough? Is the experience across the school year deep enough for these children to actually catch up to the point that they need to be? And I think we would all argue the absurdity of the length of our day and the length of our school year, the same day for every child with no differentiation. So those are, again, some of the challenges that we have. And think about Ruby Payne, in her book on generational poverty, says that a four-year-old in an affluent household has a larger vocabulary than an adult in poverty. That's a lot of work to make up.
It is a lot of work to make up. And I'm going to piggyback on some of the statements that I'll find students made this afternoon. We are using terms like complex and the brief constructed responses. And even as we discuss our kindergarteners, but by the time our students get to the third and the fourth grade, even second grade, what are we doing about passing students along? Does this exist? Does it not exist? How are we going to address this within our communities?
There's a perception that students are passed along, or social promotion is something that you hear about. We actually have a policy where schools look very closely at student readiness. But I want you to be very cautious about suggesting that students linger in grades. The American Psychological Association does not support retention. And retention might not look bad in K and 1, but it will catch up to you. What we do not want are 16-year-olds in grades seven and eight. That is not good for anyone. I think it's on us, the educators, and on us, the school community, to provide the supports and the structures so that all kids can move at somewhat of a reasonable pace. Retention does work for some students. Granted, there are many anecdotal stories of how retention has worked, but in the aggregate, it can be a very, very dangerous and frankly discriminatory practice. So we have, is it the child who's failed, or is it us who's failed? And I think we have to take the perception that it's us who's failed, and that we have to build the structures so that kids don't fall too far behind. And I can tell you that schools struggle with this mightily. Kids without foundational skills, and then you slow down your curriculum to try to address them, and suddenly, you're off pace. So every teacher in Prince George's County cries about how to address foundational issues at the same time moving towards rigor.
And along those lines, we deal with discipline and bullying and other distractions. Could you address that? Because we hear this over and over and over again. And then we perhaps, we even hear it as relates to our talented and gifted students, or perhaps students when they're in kindergarten, they're reading on a third-grade level. Could you address that for us, please?
I'm probably not the best one in the room to address all of those issues, but I will tell you that climate and classroom, classroom climate and school climate are extremely important, not only to central office, but to each building principal and each teacher. And that in high-functioning classrooms, you don't find bullying, because kids are completely engaged in the instructional practice. Now, we do have issues that come into us that we must deal with, and kids bring stuff from home that we have to address. But many of our schools work very hard, and frankly, I know the data was out there, about 35% of the kids experienced bullying. But I was looking at data this morning at two very, two middle schools in very difficult neighborhoods where the percent was actually 8% at one school and 10% at the other, who had experienced bullying. So I'm not sure it's as prevalent as it appears in the press, but I can tell you that our teachers are very, very concerned about climate, and our administrators work very, very hard to try to address the issues of negative behaviors that interfere with learning.
Are we using this as a cop-out for our students not learning? I know I'm probably putting you on the spot, and perhaps I should ask Dr. Height, I don't know, whoever's the best person to ask this. Are we using this as a cop-out, you know, when we say bullying, bullying? Bullying has been around for ages. I mean, I'm sure that I was bullied in more ways than one.
Bullying is real.
It is real.
It's real.
But what are we, is it, but what are we doing about it? Are we providing you all the resources to assist with the bullying and what needs to be done with climate in our classrooms?
Ms. Waller, we could use so many resources when it comes to wraparound services for families and children who are in crisis. We've never seen that level of funding, the kind of package that we need to put around some families. And I don't have a solution for that. But I do know that our best schools, our best teachers, find ways to engage children in productive tasks. And there are times that we can mitigate factors that we don't necessarily control.
Thank you for your indulgence.
I'd just like to tag in just a little bit and add that we are growing increasingly in our knowledge and our understanding of bullying and what it means. We are increasing the training that we are offering to teachers, guidance, school-based personnel, administrators. You've received presentations in the past on bullying. Also, I would add that the board passed last year a no-tolerance policy on bullying, and that is a practice that we have. You'll see an increase in the investigations, certainly an increase in, that comes with an increase in our awareness of what it is and what we can do about it. And at several of our schools, we are right now conducting and have completed several surveys to determine the climate for accepting change in bullying and bullying practices. And so you'll hear more about that in coming weeks.
Thank you, Ms. Lynch. So I don't want to belabor the point. So if it's just too, you know, too much to get into, just say that, and I'll move on to the next person. I was a little concerned, when I think about this, the implementation of Common Core standards and how we're talking about more rigor, with your discussion about retention. So is it different when you're talking about retention and the concept of social promotion, or is that the same thing? And if it's not a yes or no, or like a, you know?
I don't want to get into it.
Okay.
No, I'm just, the...
So I knew you were going to say that, so I gave you the out.
You know, social promotion is a term that we don't use a lot internally.
Exactly.
We would actually use retention, and we take retention very, very seriously. And schools look at the emotional stability, the impact. One question you have to ask is, how will the next year be different than the year before? So when you really look at a child's maturity, their development, all the circumstances, the resources that you can provide in the previous grade, it becomes a much more complex question than simply retention or social promotion.
So you would be cautious or recommend caution around a social promotion policy?
Well, frankly, our policy about retention and grade advancement is actually pretty decent. It's well-written, and it gives schools, it actually demands that schools look at this as a complex issue, so.
Okay.
Never mind, don't go there.
I have, let's see, I have Mr. Burrows and Ms. Johnson, but Mr. Armwood has not spoken yet, so I'm going to go to you first, Mr. Armwood, and then we'll come back for your three-minute and your three-minute, Ms. Johnson and Ms. ...
Thank you. One of the things that I'm very concerned about is children who are struggling and not properly identified early enough with proper interventions. We're talking about the assessments, we're talking about social promotion, not retention of students, but we have not spoken about what resources are available to support these students when they are failing, or when they are just barely making it. We are not providing enough resources, especially in this budgetary environment, to support, to identify and support these students. Do we have any programs that are identifying and supporting these students individually and in groups?
Yes, sir. I think you saw a significant change in that in the last decade. And there's something called response to intervention. And this is a term that describes where we see students that might have difficulties, and we actually have a targeted intervention. And we've been using interventions for quite some time. However, we recently moved $4 million in our special ed budget to specifically address response to intervention. And I'm very excited about this, and the IT department should get a lot of credit. We've actually developed a software that allows you to track not only the student weaknesses, but the interventions that the student has had, and the student's success with the intervention from year to year to year. And actually, so when they leave from one school to the other, the record goes with them. That has never happened before in Prince George's County, and frankly, in most districts in the state of Maryland, that has not happened. IT has done a wonderful job in building this. Yes, so we do have interventions, but let me caution you about interventions. Every minute that you are in an intervention, you are not receiving standards-based instruction. So if you are struggling to read in third grade, and you're getting your intervention and learning how to read, you are missing third-grade instruction. So an intervention has an opportunity cost, and we, I'm not sure, have been as effective in figuring out how to minimize the opportunity cost when an intervention is provided. So you will hear people say, this intervention is scientifically-based, research-based, and it works. And I would argue, yes, you get better at the discrete skill you were, that the intervention was designed to improve. But if you're removing students from grade-level expectation, they will never get there. So how do we build our school day and our school year and our school week so that we can do both, and one doesn't come at the cost of the other?
My experience was at the high school level, where these children have progressed past getting their specific reading intervention. And while these systems may be in place at IT, what is the penetration into the school and into the classroom? Because there are a lot of children who are allowed to just coast by. I have spoken to parents in tears who said they wanted their child to stay back and get it, because they knew their child had not learned what they needed to learn, but we passed them anyway, and they know their child is failing. What supports do we have that's actually penetrated into the classroom?
Actually, in the high schools, we have Read 180, which is an extraordinarily expensive program, but it's actually funded through special ed. So Read 180 is a program that we have in high schools. But you're absolutely correct. And I think if you look at education 50 years ago, students simply just walked out, and it was like a gentleman's agreement, school's not for you. And that was really okay. And then we went through a period of time where people would hover in schools and maybe not learn anything. And now we're in a very different period. And I think the superintendent and his staff has been, had made it very clear that not only do we want you to graduate, but you have to graduate with the skill set for the 21st century. And that has been, that has been a challenge. And I'll tell you one thing, Mr. Armwood, this all doesn't fall on the high school teachers. This tracks back into elementary and middle school, and we have to give our ninth-grade teachers products that are ready for that level of content. So the failure is not just at the high school level, it goes much deeper than that. And we have to address that at every level.
Thank you, Mr. Armwood. Ms. Johnson and Mr. Burrows, I'm going to call him Ms. Eubanks, as she has not spoken in round one. Ms. Eubanks?
Sir, I have a question, and it picks right up where you're saying about the skill set for the 21st century. Because we are in the Washington DC metropolitan area, people are pretty transient sometimes. They can't find a place to live in DC, they'll come to Maryland, and they'll move to Montgomery County. My dilemma is this. You have a fifth grader who has come here from another county, and from what the teachers can see and everyone else can see, this child is very, very bright. But because they come as a fifth grader, and they only attest you for tag up to the fourth, this child is put in a place where they cannot grow in the way they should be able to grow, because they just won't test them. You go through everybody, and you can't get a test. And I can say that, because it actually happened to me, that happened to my son. What can be done, or what's going to be done, to not hold a kid back until they get to middle school? And then I actually had a teacher to come to me, and I was so happy, because I did not know at that point what else to do. I had done everything I know to do. And she told me, she said, "Ms. Eubanks, we are holding your child back." Because he's not, he is sitting here in the first five minutes of the class, doing the warm-up and finishing the lesson while I'm still explaining it to the rest of the class.
Ms. Eubanks?
Yes.
You have, the problem is not identifying tag, the problem is opportunities for rigor for all students. I mean, that's so clear.
Exactly.
That you should walk into any school in Prince George's County, and the rigor should be there so that you don't have to finish all your work in five minutes and then play, because you've got nothing else to do.
Exactly. That's my point. That's my point. We need, with everything else we're doing, we need to be able to, the children that can do it, they should be able to do it.
And that conversation we had earlier in the afternoon about honors and differentiating honors, it's not as important to create an honors course as it is to create honors-type learning for all children.
Right.
And that's actually where we're trying to go. And we have to get away from, the superintendent has said this many times, we're always looking at the bottom, and we have to stop thinking that way. We got to start thinking about what these children can do. And these kids can do a lot. You saw that tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Eubanks. Ms. Johnson, Mr. Burrows, and Ms. Waller. Three minutes.
Very quickly, Ms. Eubanks actually went into just the brief comment I had. I want to know, at what point are we going to build a system around continuum-based instruction and learning? Where children will go into the system and will move through the system at their learning pace? When are we going to have creative, innovative instruction right there in front of children? It is a money issue. I understand it. However, we have got to do this. We have children that are scoring... We have children that are scoring off the charts at the top. And they're bored. And we have little ones that are just coming in and they are coming in with decided needs that we clearly can see. We've got to get them there. It is about planning for success. And I am saying, I don't want any more bored children. We have got to do that and we need to generate this dialogue with community. We have to pay for this. We have to build the system that builds 21st-century children. It doesn't happen just because we say we want it. So, I am looking for the strategies for planning and implementing that kind of system in Prince George's. Thanks.
Mr. Burrows?
Dr. Abigaz, I know I asked, well, I have in my budget questions for an evaluation of Read 180, but I guess I can make the request to you because it's probably more appropriate for you to, is it, do we have an evaluation of Read 180?
Not that I'm aware of, but Read 180 does not come out of the general funds. It actually comes out of our special ed grant. So, it's, when it's grant-funded, it's not the kind of stuff that you guys are freaking out about right now.
Good to know. Because that was definitely one of my, you know, highlighted things that I was considering in the budget. I also wanted to talk about, very briefly, the same thing that most of the colleagues talked about, and that's, we have students at the elementary school level who we know they're not performing, well, individually, individual students. We know throughout the whole system that they're not performing, but yet they're being promoted and promoted. And when I was the student member, I used the example as the example of, we have students taking AP Calculus that haven't passed the Algebra HSA. And that's the example that I want to give, but for all grade levels. We have students that are sitting in the fifth-grade math class that can't do third-grade math. And that's something that we somehow have to address, that I'm hoping that you would address and that you would advise the board, what we can do to support you in that. And also, I do want to caution the administration in this regard. I know several schools, system-wide, we have goals and expectations. And we might say, "Every ninth grader must take the high school assessment." Do we do that now? No?
No.
No, because the students don't access the course, some of the courses, until their 10th-grade year. The only course that they would access at ninth grade would be Algebra in some cases.
Okay, and so when they take that Algebra, who determines if they get into Algebra or not?
It's based on what their previous grades were and if they passed in math in eighth grade and what courses they took in eighth grade.
Okay. My concern was, I talked to several teachers who had students come in from middle school that were not up to par and they were very, very worried that they had to not only catch them up in the first, second quarter with basics and then teach them how to perform on the test in the third and fourth quarter. And that was a legitimate concern that I heard as I visited classrooms.
And that concern wouldn't be just in high school. I mean, think about it. In every grade, teachers are worrying about addressing foundational skills while still addressing the standards of the grade. And I'll go back to my response to Mr. Armwood. They, there's an opportunity cost in resource, time resource, attention resource, that has been particularly challenging for us. And yet, as Ms. Johnson said, we seem to be in these structures that don't allow us the flexibility to really give us the kind of supports. For example, students, a support mechanism for AP could be AP Seminar. So, if a student is in AP Bio A-Day, B-Day could be AP Bio Seminar where you're kind of repeating or rehearsing. So, there are a lot of different ways to provide supports. I'm not sure we've been as, as Ms. Johnson said, as creative in figuring out how to do that. So, but addressing foundational skills and the course expectation or grade expectation becomes a challenge.
Thank you. Ms. Waller?
Thank you, Madam Chair. All is not lost and I'm going to speak as a parent, to parents and to the community. We know that we are dealing with, and our budget constraints, but there are many resources that are available to all of us within the system, outside the system, to help our students achieve rigor and to master the academics. And we are so fortunate that we're able, we live in a community where we have access to NASA Goddard, Patriarch Technology. So many of our colleges have summer programs that our students can engage in. We have National Society of the Black Engineers. And certainly, this is a time of year right now to start making applications for and looking for these programs for our students for this spring and this summer. I've been there, done it, have a T-shirt and a keychain in it. So, we have to go to the library. Maryland National Capitol Parking Planning used to put out a book that would give out a list of a lot of the summer activities. You cannot wait until May to find out what my child is going to be doing this summer to get ahead next fall because we're already planning the rigor. Now, let's go back, I know we're going back to the budget, but what I'm interested, okay, we have the complexity and the curriculum crosswalk, et cetera. Are our teachers ready? Are we preparing our staff? Are they in a mindset to go along with where the administration is going?
Some people got there before we did. The, we're a very large school system. If you're in a small district, you can call every 11th-grade English teacher into a room very easily. It's very difficult here. So, in Prince George's County, everything has to go through layers. So, you have to find your critical game changers, your influence peddlers. And in large school systems, that tends to be three different positions. The school leader, the content leader, and then there is generally this other teacher who is brilliant and excited and engaged, but they might not have any formal position. So, what we have to do is structurally, we have to continue to have conversations with the school leader and those content leaders through the area assistance groups and through our curriculum instruction. But we also have to find those magic teachers who do not have a position but have influence and get them talking to each other and engaged so that they can help drive the change. But our size makes that a challenge.
Are our administrators feeling overwhelmed? Do you feel that in some schools, in some instances, we have too many initiatives? And if we do, how is the administration addressing the situation?
The job of being a principal is brutally tough. And every year, there's more and more. And we address that by giving them more.
Thank you, Ms. Waller. Mr. Armwood?
To Ms. Amber's point, we need the wraparound services, which we really are dismantling in a lot of cases due to budget constraints and what have you, to provide the support that parents need. Ms. Amber points out all of the resources that are available, and there are many resources. But many of our parents don't have the knowledge, they don't know how to access them. If they knew about them, they don't have the skills to reach them. We have to step up as a system to beef up our counseling, wraparound services, to try to support parents, educate parents, and grab ahold of that child. We no longer have the luxury of the guidance counselors, who used to be able to take an hour or two to counsel a student, to get to know their students individually. This is where we're failing and that's where we need these wraparound services to include not only skill counseling, but where you get food, where you get education, this whole idea of wraparound services. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Armwood. That concludes the questioning from colleagues. Thank you for your presentation. Did you buzz in? Oh, okay, I just want to make sure. Dr. Height, did you have anything to add before we move to the budget consent agenda, sir?
No, ma'am.
Okay, on that note, we can move to the budget consent agenda, Dr. Height.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Under budget consent agenda, we have 11 items that were presented at the most recent CIP Fab meeting.
Thank you, Dr. Height. Colleagues, I entertain a motion. Move to accept. Thank you, Ms. Beck.
Second.
Thank you, Mr., actually, you can't vote on these items, you can vote on the next one.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Burrows. So, we're properly moved in second that we accept the consent agenda items at the 7.0 placed on the board agenda. Thank you. Ms. Laban, call the roll, please. I'm sorry, oh, go ahead.
On the motion, Mr. Armwood.
Aye.
Ms. Boston?
Aye.
Mr. Burrows?
Aye.
Ms. Eubanks?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Waller?
Aye.
Ms. Beck?
Aye.
Ms. Jacobs?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Dr. Height?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The next consent agenda, set of consent agenda items under 8.0 are three items, 8.1 to 8.3.
Thank you, Dr. Height. Ms. Johnson?
Question. I don't have any problem with, I just do have one question and it's not included. I don't know how you want to handle this, but I do think that it'd be, given the fact that we have budget issues here, this question for me is vitally important as to whether or not I can move on this or we should move on this, so.
Which item are you referring to, Ms. Johnson?
This is the loading and unloading of Fund 1921, the School Improvement Grant.
Under, oh, under the 8.3, okay.
Right, I understand what it is.
Dr. Height, can you address?
Yes. The simple question is, within the, when you unload it and the explanation of the what, the support, to support temporary hourly instructional wages, parenthesis, incentive stipends for classroom teachers. Now, given the budget that you have already presented, which may or may not be torn down and reconfigured, are these stipends required under the grant or will you have oversight to not give them if you continue forward with your proposal under these budget constraints that once again, we don't do them? See, I don't know.
Yeah, Ms. Johnson, thank you for that question because it allows us to clarify that. Under the School Improvement Grant, we call it the SIG Grant, we had to submit a proposal and then have that proposal approved in order to implement that grant across all of the schools that are in improvement. So, this realignment of funds talks specifically about the School Improvement Grant and realigning those funds in order to pay stipends based on the plan that was submitted and subsequently approved by MSDE.
Which is outside of the normal grant differential-type process of, within the operation budget, yes?
That's, these are the funds that came directly from the Fed, from the federal government through the state.
No, I got that.
So, it's different than our operating budget.
Exactly, and that's what I needed to have clarified because clearly, these are contracted employees which fall under the contracts that we currently have. And the temporary hourly employees, these are new hires or currently on staff. Because it says temporary hourly instructional wages.
So, incentive stipends are just coded under a sub-object code called temporary hourly instructional.
Okay.
So, there's a lot of different things that fall under that category, which would be pay for after-school-hour work or incentive stipends.
Right, I got.
But it's current full-time teaching staff that would receive these in the 1003G schools.
That, good, because I wanted to know if we were going to be hiring specifically for that category or as you have explained. Madam Chair, that allows me to understand that and I thank you.
You're quite welcome, Ms. Johnson. Mr. Burrows?
Dr. Height, I had a question about 8.2. And I just want to make clear that this charter school is succeeding academically?
Yes, as, Mr. Burrows, the, imagine Lincoln Public Charter School, as you recall, is a school that we put on probation several years ago. And now the school is meeting all of the criteria that were defined inside of that probation, there are a period. And they're starting to really show progress. And that's why we're making a recommendation for the renewal of their charter.
For three years?
Yes.
And three years isn't too long? I mean, it's, if.
Well, even inside the three years, there are criteria inside of the charter that would allow us to then talk about probation again if we needed to. But this is, the three-year proposal is consistent with how we recommend the other charters as well.
Okay. I do want to congratulate this charter because I remember that tough conversation. I do want to thank all the teachers and the employees there who worked very hard to make this happen.
Ms. Beck?
Move approval of items 801, 802, 803. Thank you. So, we're properly moved in second approval of consent agenda items 8, 1, 2, and 3. Ms. Laban, call the roll, please.
Motion, Mr. Armwood. Ms. Boston?
Aye.
Mr. Burrows?
Aye.
Ms. Eubanks?
Aye.
Ms. Higgins? Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Waller?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Ms. Beck?
Aye.
Ms. Jacobs?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Colleagues, we have no unfinished business on this particular agenda. However, we do have, as a first reader, proposal, except I don't see. We have three registered speakers on the issue of preserving, saving Fairwood Elementary School, which was, has previously been in the budget, but there will be no board discussion on this item. I do want to remind, however, that on January 12th at 6:30 PM, the administration will be presenting the two options that were presented in December at the CIP Fab meeting, which would be an opportunity for, additional opportunity for public comment prior to this coming back before the board on another agenda. With that said, there's no discussion on first reader items. However, we have three registered speakers and the first person is Ms. Karen Evans. Please come forward.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen of the board. On behalf, I'm here on behalf of the Tulip Grove Elementary School Parent Teacher Association, I have a statement to read. We must express our concern with the current Fairwood Elementary School proposal that includes the potential closure of Tulip Grove. While we sympathize with the Fairwood community and their desire for a neighborhood school, we disagree with the sacrifice of our school to make that happen. Tulip Grove is one of the highest-performing schools in Prince George's County, something that we should be looking to celebrate and replicate, not shut down. As plans to renovate and replace Tulip Grove maintained our same state-rated capacity, we were under the impression that the board saw the value in keeping our neighborhood school in place. It is also a significant concern that the Tulip Grove community was brought into this process so late. As the Fairwood analysis was dated December 8, we can see that this issue was being discussed nearly a month before we were aware of it. It is disappointing to us that we were put in the position of defending our school's very existence with so little time to prepare or notify the Tulip Grove community. We appreciate that a community meeting has been arranged next week. Thank you. And look forward to hearing justifications from the board and Dr. Height and hope that input from the Tulip Grove families will help the board understand how important it is to us that our school remain a part of the Buick community. And on a little personal note, I- And on a little personal note, I was going to talk about my street. I live on a street that has 11 houses. We are three blocks from the school. Currently, eight children from my street walk to school. We have three more that start next year. So in 11 houses, there are a lot of children at Tulip Grove. And people are purchasing homes on my street and in my neighborhood because of Tulip Grove, because of the excellence in education that is promoted there. Our school population is only going to grow because this trend is continuing. So I just really want you to, to look at what you propose and even look at the numbers because those are changing all the time. We thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. Eric Kornmeyer?
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen of the board. Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Superintendent, School System Staff. My name is Eric Kornmeyer. I'm here before the board today as a parent with two lovely daughters attending Tulip Grove Elementary. I speak as a parent who volunteers at the school often. From running the cakewalk at our Fall Festival, making sure Santa arrives at our Winter Wonderland event, and serving as a lunch monitor last year, I have made choices to be a near-daily participant in the Tulip Grove community. I'm a career firefighter, and that career choice affords me the time to be involved in my children's education, which has been proven to strengthen their educational process. I'm here because Tulip Grove Elementary has been listed as a choice to save the funding for Fairwood Elementary. While I understand that this option is very early, early in its planning stages, it is never too early to speak on behalf of future Tulip Grove parents. As you may or may not know, the Levitt section of Bowie is getting ready to celebrate its 50th year anniversary. The suburban model that Levitt gave America has been duplicated throughout the country over the last 50 years. The developer Fairwood, the developers of Fairwood did their best to recreate this community in a 21st century setting, based on Levitt's idea. They wanted to put shopping within walking distance, have a variety of homes at different price points, parks for people to enjoy, a community full of amenities, and a neighborhood school within walking distance. What parent wouldn't want to raise their children in a community so well-planned? While the Levitt section of Bowie has local stores, local churches, tons of local parks and open space, and was built with a neighborhood school to support each neighborhood, the community of Fairwood has not been so lucky. The developer has given the land necessary for a neighborhood school, but the county has chose not to build the school, nor did it force the developer to build the school, as other counties have. Some nine years later, Fairwood has a shopping center, it has plenty of parks, and yet they must continue to fight for their neighborhood school. I commend them for their continued efforts to have Fairwood Elementary built. They deserve a neighborhood school just as planned. However, in these times of financial peril for families, local governments, state governments, and our country in general, the state of Maryland has refused to fund the next phase of funding for the building of Fairwood Elementary. As I understand it, Fairwood was number four in a priority list that the Prince George's Board of Education has provided to the state of Maryland. And yet, in the minds of those that make the decisions, they do not feel funding this school is necessary at this time. They were given a student population of adjacent schools and determined that building a new school was just not possible at this time. As a parent, I would be quite upset that after so many years of moving forward on a plan to build a school, the funding could be stopped with one simple decision. And I hope that you guys, as the board, decide not to consider option number two as a viable choice in saving Fairwood Elementary. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Kornmeyer. Elnora Wixson?
Good afternoon, Madam Chairman and members of the board, members of the staff. I am here to speak in opposition to the opening of Fairwood and the possible replacement of Glendale Elementary School. The fact that Glendale is being considered for possible closure has come to our attention at the last minute, through the grapevine, rather than in a timely fashion from the County Board of Education. This action was proposed at the Board of Education's Capital Improvement Program, December 20th, yet it was two days ago that members of our community became aware of this proposal and its placement on today's agenda. I think that Tulip Grove knew maybe even a couple of days in advance of us, so that's very disappointing. I am adamantly opposed to the possible closure of Glendale Elementary. The state of Maryland has recommended against spending tax fair funds to build Fairwood Elementary School based on decreased demand for elementary school seats in the adjacent schools. There's no justification for reconsidering this proposal. Glendale Elementary is richly diverse socially and economically, as it was when it reopened in 1993. And for that reason, we purposefully decided to enroll our children as members of its first classes. Glendale, sorry, we were delighted with the quality of education that our children received at Glendale, and we continue to believe in the value of this school as a community institution. In an email response received by my husband, Henry Wixson, from Chairwoman Jacobs, it was stated that the board is searching for ways to save state CIP funding for Fairwood Elementary School by reviewing surrounding communities within Bowie that are scheduled in the CIP for replacement or in need of reservation. Sorry. First, I need to make it clear that Glendale is not within Bowie, and therefore, the closure of Glendale should not be considered a solution to this CIP funding issue. And finally, I'm astonished that a superintendent's meeting to consider the future of Glendale Elementary will be held outside our community with neither intentional nor sufficient notice to the members of the community. And I would like to ask for a second meeting to be held in Glendale with advanced notice to members of the community. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Wixson. Colleagues, we do not generally have public discussion by the board on first reader, but I have a request from Mr. Burrows to ask a question on this issue. I am asking for a motion, if there is one, to suspend the rules, keeping in mind that we have also communicated to the public that we would not deliberate on this issue today. Is there a motion to suspend the rules to have a question on this issue?
So moved.
Is there a second? It's been properly moved in second that we suspend the rules to have a question by Mr. Burrows on the issue of the Fairwood community and Glendale and Bowie community issue of the Fairwood Elementary School. We need a two-thirds vote. Ms. Labon, call the roll, please.
On the motion, Mr. Armwood?
Aye.
Ms. Boston?
Aye.
Mr. Burrows?
Aye.
Ms. Eubanks?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson? Ms. Waller?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Ms. Beck?
Aye.
Ms. Jacobs?
No.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Mr. Burrows?
Doctor Height, I just had a concern. My concern is the, what is the rationale behind this? We have two schools that are performing well. We have one of the schools, that's a blue ribbon school, that is subject to be closed down to meet a CIP need. Can you please explain, or maybe I should direct this to the CIP office? But, I mean, what is the rationale behind this?
First, Mr. Burrows, there's no proposal to close anything. One of the things that we're looking at, options inside of the CIP. Fairwood was submitted as a part of our CIP plan. There weren't, there weren't sufficient seats in order to get Fairwood approved based on the state Board of Public Works. The state indicated that if you have other options to review in order to get this school approved, then submit those to us as well. The only other options that we have to consider are if, in fact, we looked at Tulip Grove or if we looked at Glendale. This is not a proposal to close anything. These are just submitting other options to the board so that you can consider those as you considered the submitting Fairwood as a priority for, for the CIP.
So then, where, it says option one, close Glendale Elementary, and option two, close Tulip Grove. Can you please explain that?
So these are options for the board to explore. So the board can take action to say, and that's the problem with discussing this in first reader. The board could take action that says, we don't choose to do anything. We'll submit the plan as proposed. Or we would submit one of these other options after hearing from both of these schools at the meeting that we have planned next week. So, but the, but the action then comes back to the board in order to either submit the plan as proposed, do not change anything, or to exercise one of those two options. And that staff went back and looked for other ways to do this, and those were the only two options that we could come up with. So there's no recommendation that something else be closed. We just wanted to submit to the board other options for considering how Fairwood could be advanced. And then, I must also add, after all of that, the state could still come back, the Board of Public Works could still come back and say, you still don't have sufficient need to justify this new space. So it's, nothing guarantees that it would change the response from the Board of Public Works. However, this, the proposal that you're receiving inside of this item is just another way to consider Fairwood.
I do want to thank my colleagues for their indulgence. You know, the communities have a right to be extremely concerned, and they are. And so I wanted to take this time to at least address some of the concerns that I saw in the emails. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burrows. Colleagues, the matter before us is to, this is on the board agenda as a first reader, which allows us to move forward with further discussion here from the public. And I want to note that this item was also placed on the agenda and announced prior to the CIP meeting where the board first heard of the two items. I will entertain a motion on first reader.
So moved.
Is there a second? It's been properly moved in second to accept this item as a first reader. Any further discussion? Ms. Labon, call the roll, please.
On the motion, Mr. Armwood?
Aye.
Ms. Boston?
Aye.
Mr. Burrows?
No.
Ms. Eubanks?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Waller?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Ms. Beck?
No.
Ms. Jacobs?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Colleagues, we now have public comment on non-agenda items. We have one registered speaker on non-agenda items, which is Mr. David L. Kahn, who's not here. Okay, follow-up items. Question on follow-up items, Ms. Beck?
Dr. Height, on, on 1201 follow-up items, at the CIP meeting in December, I asked for some clarifying information on the Woodmore projection that really had a dramatic change. And this information would be appropriate to have for the public prior to the hearing on the Fairwood issue?
Okay, we will make that available.
Will it be posted on board docs?
Yes, we can. Posted on board docs.
Okay.
Because we sent that response. To you.
Right, but it was not publicly available.
Right, so we'll make it available to the, we'll make the response available to the public.
Okay.
And put it on board docs.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else on follow-up items? Seeing none, that adjourns our public session. And colleagues, just a reminder, we have to return to executive session to address executive session items. Dr. Height, do you have anything else? Okay, thank you, we are adjourned.